Yes, this is John Stein. I want to call to order the CPS Energy Board of Trustees meeting, December 14th, 2020, at 1:00. And Ms. Schellman, if you're on the line, I'd ask our general counsel to call the roll, please.
Yes, sir, I'm here. Dr. Mackey.
Present.
Kelly.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Present. Sorry, my phone locks up.
Mayor, Mayor Nuremberg. And Mr. Stein, you are here, so we do have a quorum, and we can proceed.
Good. And so, we do have a quorum, so let me turn the floor over to Ivan.
Thank you, Chair Stein, and good afternoon. My name is Ivan. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees thanks you for joining their December regular board meeting by teleconference. The board is always interested in hearing public input. If you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment portions of the agenda, please press zero on your phone keypad to be put in the queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name, and when you hear Chair Stein say your name, your line will be open, and you will have two minutes to speak. You will hear a chime sound to indicate you have 10 seconds remaining to speak. For all others who speak during the meeting, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. I will now turn the call back over to Chair Stein.
Thank you very much, Ivan. We would move to item two, which is our safety message, but I think we need to defer that until the mayor's on the line. And so, with no objection, we'll go to, agenda item three, which is the invocation. Ms. Deborah Wayne Scott.
Thank you. We are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing important responsibilities. We ask that you guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. Help us to do good, to be honest, to serve others, and to fulfill our obligations to our community. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wayne Scott. Let's go back to the safety message, and maybe, we normally start with the mayor and then move to our CEO, but Paula Gold Williams, would you like to go first, pending the joining of our mayor?
Yes, sure. Can you speak?
Oh, Mayor, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm here now. Apologize for starting off.
Oh, no problem. We're on agenda item two, the safety message, and it's your opportunity to speak to CPS Energy, your CPS Energy family about COVID-19.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone, again, for your diligence throughout this last many months. Where we are with the pandemic is essentially where we were last month. We're still in a period of uptick. In fact, we're now spiking in terms of the infections here in San Antonio. Last week, we reported a significant increase in our positivity rate, over 15%, which is a high mark from the summer. We are testing more than we ever have, so the good news is we're identifying infections faster and hopefully keeping them from spreading too far. However, it does mean that we are seeing a lot more people get ill, and we are also seeing more people in the hospital. The increase in our hospitals has been steady, but it hasn't been accelerating as we saw in July and August, which is a good thing. We have been taking care of El Paso patients, as they've been quite overwhelmed over there, but that number has decreased. Our El Paso patient count has decreased significantly, and we're almost seeing the total number of El Paso patients now go back home, which is a good thing. We are starting to see the vaccines being distributed in the rest of the country, and we expect our first vaccines to be delivered and distributed here in town this week. The first allotment of 24,000 will arrive in our city sometime this week, and we are going to proceed with the plan, which is to vaccinate our frontline healthcare workers first. In addition to them, when we get our allotment and further shipments, you'll see EMS workers as well as long-term care residents and staff among the first to be vaccinated, and then eventually, probably a good four or five, even six months from now, they'll eventually be available for the general public. So, we are in the thick of this pandemic for sterile several more months, so we are urging everyone to continue their precautions of mask-wearing, physical distancing, proper hygiene, et cetera. But as we are seeing the vaccines, I think we can finally start to see the light at the end of the tunnel. We're just urging people to keep their guard up. We are continuing to enforce the state's orders as well as the local orders, which I know have been very well adhered to, for the most part, by our community, which is one of the reasons why we still are in better shape than most areas of Texas. But we need to continue to urge compliance, so enforcement is still underway. Last thing I'll say is that the relief efforts by the city and the county are still quite robust and being conducted. We have an emergency housing assistance program that has provided over $60 million to housing relief and has still funds available. We estimate that that program will still be working as robustly as it is now, even through the first quarter of the year. All told, City Council has allocated $76 million to housing relief here in San Antonio and direct housing assistance. We also have an additional $44 million as part of our workforce recovery program that is towards direct cash assistance for folks that are laid off and are now training for jobs that are available in our community. In addition, the City Council allocated roughly $30 million in small business grants for those businesses that have been affected worse by the pandemic. A number of those grants now are being focused on food and beverage establishments. As we know, they have been acutely affected during the pandemic. So, the relief efforts of the community have been ongoing. We are grateful for the cooperation among the city and the county, and we're going to continue our diligence on those efforts. We are hoping that there is another relief package eventually approved by Congress here, and we do have the structures in place to make sure that those relief funds, when available, are moved efficiently through the community. So, keep your guard up. Thank you all very much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. And I must speak on behalf of all of us. Thank you so much for your leadership throughout this, and as you said, hopefully, with the vaccine, first shipment come to San Antonio this week, you know, we're beginning to see the end of this. Let's have our CEO give her safety message.
Yes, Chair Stein, thank you so much for the opportunity. It is, again, CPS Energy's appreciation of the mayor and judge and their leadership to keep a focus on this in our community. I will obviously focus on CPS Energy because the mayor did a very thorough job across our community. We broke the 200 mark in terms of the number of cases diagnosed from our employee base, and we've also seen our quarantines go back up again. We were above, I think, at the peak when it started happening, we were above 200. We've gone down to like in the 50s range, hovered below 100 for a very long time in terms of quarantines. We are now up to 183 people in quarantine. Very much believe it ties back to the holiday exposures. It also, I think, ties to our better contract tracing efforts that we have. I'd say, though, that we continue to work diligently and try to find a way forward to keep our operations going effectively. The organization is still devastated from the employee that we lost. We've lost one. One is too many, and so we are still passionate to tell everyone to stay vigilant. I don't think we need to celebrate. I think, and this is my personal opinion, and as leader of CPS Energy, we're telling our people to stay vigilant, because we do think it's going to take some time to orchestrate the vaccine and get it amongst us. So, we're going to stay diligent and focused and keep our physical distancing and practices on health up as much as possible, and continue to encourage our people to really enjoy the rest of the holidays with their family members and the ones that live with them, and then use technology to stay in touch. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Gold Williams, and thank you for the outstanding job you're doing running the company and dealing with this pandemic.
Thank you, sir.
Let's move to item four, public comment. This is the time we provide an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We'll follow a similar process as to what we've done for in-person board meetings. I'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, so we may hear their comments. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. For this meeting, we have eight registered speakers, who will each have two minutes to speak. Speakers will hear a chime sound when 10 seconds remain, letting them know that they should wrap up their comments. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they're going to speak about. Our first speaker is Richard Pettis, followed by Russell Seal. Mr. Pettis.
Good afternoon, Chairman Stein and members of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. My name is Richard Pettis, and I am the president of a small San Antonio not-for-profit called the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to take a moment to congratulate you as a citizen-run CPS Energy Board of Trustees for your continued focus on open and transparent governance and whose policy decisions have served the best interests of our community. You are to be commended for your focus on running the organization as a successful business that at the same time continues to serve the needs of the most vulnerable of our community by suspending all service disconnections, assisting low-income citizens, senior citizens that are disabled, those with critical care issues, as well as burned veterans with innovative late fee waiver programs, affordability discounts, bill assistance, and payment plan programs, not to mention robust weatherization programs, rebates to citizens for white roof, HVAC upgrades, gas appliance conversion, and household rooftop and commercial solar installation. All this while continuing to focus on innovation and real embrace on green technologies that have made CPS Energy number one in Texas and fifth in the nation for solar energy generation, and second in Texas for wind energy generation. Your competent CEO and her team of professionals continues to focus on delivering and adding value to the company and to the citizens by smartly evaluating the operations and squeezing savings through excellent management of employee health benefits and embracing technologies for efficient meter reading and billing. At the same time, customer affordability, reliability, environmental responsibility, resiliency, security, and safety are the pillars that run through all the organization does and gains local, national, and international praise and awards. Finally, your discussion later today regarding the appointment of a citizen-rated advisory committee shows your responsiveness and willingness to embrace new ideas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. The next speaker is Russell Seal, and Mr. Seal will be followed by Peter Bella.
Yes, thank you, Chair Stein, and my name is Russell Seal, and I've been an environmental activist for more than a decade now, working with CPS Energy. I am a member of many environmental organizations, but today I'm speaking for myself on agenda item 12 on the rate advisory committee. And I first would like to applaud and thank Chair Stein and Dr. Mackey for meeting with myself and another group of individuals to talk about the mayor's proposal, BC, before COVID, for this rate advisory committee. Mayor, thank you so much for bringing this very important dialogue with the community forward. As many people know, our relationships with the environmental community has been strained as of recent, but this is a very good opportunity for reset. What we need to understand with the rate advisory committee, that it will be ultimately six city council members that will vote for any rate structure changes or rate changes in the future. In this process, if it is done correctly, to bring broad public input from all sectors of our community and all sectors of CPS's customer base, inside the city limits and outside the city limits, in for this discussion. One of my pillars is driving me to work as a volunteer on this for over a decade is climate change. As a member of the Climate Action Committee, I was out of serve in that committee, and keeping this in mind with our rates as we move forward to get those city council votes in the public trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. Let's hear from Peter Bella, followed by Dr. Terry Burns.
Mr. Chairman, board members, good afternoon. My name is Peter Bella. I am a resident of San Antonio. I retired in 2014 as the Director of the Natural Resources Department at the Alamo Area Council of Governments, where it was my pleasure to work in partnership with CPS Energy and the wider community to maintain our status of attainment with respect to federal standards for ground-level ozone. I was also fortunate enough to support CPS Energy in establishing their Save the Tomorrow Energy Plan, or STEP, which has been an incredible success. I speak today to agenda item number 12 regarding the rate advisory committee. I am very much in favor of the formation of the rate advisory committee, as it helps to fulfill several key goals in the city's near future. First, climate equity is simply a fundamental tenet for achieving success in the city's carbon planning process as a climate-ready. As we, the citizens of San Antonio, take up the charge to do our part locally to limit an increase in global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius, the process must maintain equity as the plan is executed. The board is poised to create a rate advisory committee while the city and CPS Energy will consider plans for energy generation guaranteed to limit carbon emissions appropriately with equity as a cornerstone, which must necessarily be balanced with consideration of CPS Energy's six guiding value pillars and financial responsibility. Creation of the rate advisory committee seems an excellent idea to me. Number two, that the rate advisory committee will be a public and hence highly transparent process implies that we, members of the public, must take it up as our duty to be sure that our own voices are heard and the balance we seek is crafted by us. As a member of the environmental community, I speak strongly in support of the committee, and I must thank you for your responsiveness to the public in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. Now, we'll hear from Terry Burns, followed by Darby Riley.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Terry Burns, Chair of the Alamo Share Club. I again call out your collective fiduciary failures. Your CEO leads you by the nose. Last month, she quoted, "rejected the notion that CPS Energy should increase the general fund transfer to COSA," unquote. I much appreciate Trustee Gonzalez for having the temerity to suggest such action and for, quote, "her opinion that more public participation is needed," unquote. I thank the mayor for his continued support for RAC. Why should this take a year, and why do you need to hire expensive outside consultants except to follow sauce in building a sham transparency and guarantee delivery of the results you want? Last month's CEO report and this month's PR report, item six, continue to demonstrate how CPS staff fudge the data to fool you for their own best interest. Revenues and connections are compared between residential and commercial groups, without mention of energy usage. Mr. Garza will soon discuss, quote, "a year in review dedicated service," unquote. In this pandemic, you run ads on Cowboys football television to tell us how great you are. Mr. Garza provides you a glossy PR report stating meaningfully, quote, "100% customers appreciative," exclamation mark, unquote. This bloated marketing budget is an offense to all ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. And our next speaker will be Darby Riley, followed by Mario Bravo.
Yes, this is Darby Riley. I'm a citizen and a ratepayer, and calling about the, I guess this would be item 12. Basically, I'm calling about the proposal to change CPS Energy governance from the unelected board to city council. Part of, in opposition to this, the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Perez, has claimed that the petition led to their recent negative outlook on CPS Energy's bond ratings by Fitch Rating Agency. So, I'm looking at Fitch's press release of October 15th, in which they stated that the bonds are AA+ but the outlook is revised to negative, and it states that "the negative outlook reflects Fitch's concern that rate increases required to maintain a financial profile consistent with the current rating may not materialize. The risk is somewhat heightened by the broader economic stress caused by the pandemic, which could impact city council's willingness to approve without delay the full amount of a rate request. The lack of recent base rate increases, with the last adjustment occurring in February 2014, may add to customer rate sensitivity. A prolonged weakening of CPS Energy's operating cash flow without a timely base rate increase would likely pressure the current rating." So, in other words, there's two reasons for the negative outlook, and neither one of them has to do with the proposal to change the CPS Energy governance from the unelected board to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Our next speaker is Mario Bravo, followed by Isabella Brucino.
I want to thank the board for moving forward with this advisory committee. It wasn't long ago that your current citizens advisory committee met in secret and didn't publish meeting agendas or meeting minutes. While you recently agreed to publish agendas and minutes from those meetings, they continue to meet in secret. At the beginning of this year, I resigned as the Chair of CPS Energy Stakeholder Group because I did not believe that senior staff met with us in good faith in those closed-door meetings. Secret meetings and closed-door meetings will be a thing of the past under this new advisory committee. I want to thank Trustee Kelly for looking out for the financial well-being of CPS Energy. Like Kelly, I experienced sticker shock when I learned that CPS planned to spend $1 million developing this new advisory committee. It was never my intention for you to spend that much when I made the asks that I did, including asking you to use the American Public Power Association's Implementation Guide on Public Participation for Community-Owned Utilities. I want to thank Trustee Stein for encouraging staff to use that guide in developing this committee. The guide's executive summary states, "Using the public participation process is not free, but is likely to be less expensive than ignoring it when making decisions that have a high impact on the public." In 2017, CPS Energy finished writing off $391 million in debt from a bad deal on a nuclear plant that will never be built. If spending $1 million on developing this public participation process prevents CPS Energy from wasting another $391 million, it will be the best investment you've ever made. While I'm happy that you're creating this advisory committee, I don't understand why you're increasing the number of members appointed by CPS Energy. If this committee has no authority, what is the reason for stacking the committee? My vision for this committee is that they will discuss the biggest issues that CPS Energy faces, share ideas, challenge them respectfully, and move the very best solutions forward as proposals for the Board of Trustees. Sometimes those proposals may be in line with what CPS Energy staff propose, but sometimes they may be different, giving the board alternative choices to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. Our next speaker is Isabella Brucino, and followed by our final speaker, Didi Belmaras.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Mayor. I'm Isabella Brucino, a San Antonio resident and an organizer with Texas Rising. I'm here today to speak to the importance of an effective rate advisory committee. So, March was a big month, the start of quarantine, over a pandemic that continues to take a financial toll on people's lives. Whether or not this is ignored and a selfish rate hike takes place, this possible rate hike makes it all the more important to establish a well-designed rate advisory committee, also something that first received attention back in March, nine months ago. Don't continue to drag your feet on this simple measure, similarly to how you've been dragging your feet on closing the Spruce Coal Plant. This committee not only needs to be established, but also composed in a way that makes it operate to the best of its ability. Creating a CPS-centered echo chamber through uneven representation in a stacked committee would not serve your customers, the public. Establishing the committee as proposed would, for the first time, add some weight to Trustee Kelly's criticisms of it. We need a rate advisory committee formed that fairly and effectively centers its discussions around our community, not the business community, and is not composed in a way that sets customers up to lose. We need a Board of Trustees that listens to these calls and doesn't brush off such committees, which would supplement and assist their decisions as a waste of time. Thank you for listening to me and for considering these points.
Thank you, Ms. Brucino. And let's move to our final speaker, Ms. Didi Belmaras.
Good afternoon. This is Didi Belmaras, I'm a climate justice organizer with Public Citizen, and I'm speaking on agenda item number 12. It's been nine months since the Board of Trustees approved the rate advisory committee resolution, so we're looking forward to the Board of Trustees finally voting on this. It's long overdue that CPS Energy customers have the opportunity to give input on rate structure and power generation, especially in light that CPS Energy will likely ask for a rate increase in 2021, and its insistence that it's unable to shut the Spruce Coal Plant by 2030. However, it's disappointing, but not surprising, that once again CPS Energy has ignored input from the environmental community regarding the formation of the rate advisory committee. CPS Energy is giving itself an unfair advantage when it's able to appoint 11 members to this committee, including the Chair and Co-Chair, while city council will appoint 10 members. It's CPS Energy's insistence on doing business as usual, with little regard to real public participation and input, that has forced community members to petition for a recall on the policies and decision-makers of this utility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belmaras. That concludes our public comment portion of the meeting. Let's move to agenda item five, which is the CEO's report. Ms. Gold Williams.
Thank you, Chair Stein. I do have my presentation. I will try to describe carefully what my points are. I write that report up to the very minute, because we're paying attention to a lot of things on the landscape. But we will, as usual, post these materials from my presentation on the website. They'll be available, and we also started providing annotated versions of this as well, so people can click the link, listen to the presentation, and they can also, if they just want to read the content from each slide, they can. So, basically, I'm on Slide 2 of my presentation, that the objective, I want to explain our focus and how we look at the communication landscape. I'm going to, of course, align those points to our guiding value pillars. Those are very important. We were able to finalize those with oversight from the board over a year ago, and they are very, very helpful as we try to make sure that we're doing things in balance. We're going to cover, as we've been communicating with the public, I want to highlight to you about the different types of questions that we get. It kind of depends on what the group is that we're talking to, but we do get a wide range of questions, and we do have a lot of just general interest. And so, in this presentation, I'm going to talk to you about some of the questions that we get, the topics, and so you know where those conversations are generally going. I will, though, again, say every group in particular has its own particular interests and priorities, but we try to make sure that we talk to everyone about whatever they're interested in. I'm going to talk a little bit about customer satisfaction. We do measure that on a regular basis and have for years, and I want to talk about where we are in terms of our polling information. And I want to ultimately end with this focus on communication continues, and that we continue to want to refresh the way that we communicate with everyone. We do understand and look forward to the discussion on the RAC today. That's another avenue we'll be able to add, if approved, today. But no matter what, we want to always enhance that, always want to refresh our conversations, and recommit to always enhance that, always want to refresh our conversations and, and recommit to, to more communication with, with, uh, the public and our community. So, I'm going to bypass 3, because it's just the topical points of what the objectives are, and I'm going to go to Slide 4. And on the, the communication landscape, I just want to indicate that we do a lot of things. We, we do poll, um, our customers to ask them what's interesting. Uh, we did do some polling with customers earlier in 2020, uh, that gave us some insights. We also, uh, survey customers whenever we can, whether they be at, uh, special events or online. We try to find ways to get information that way. We do focus groups and test groups. Uh, we did quite a bit of it back in the 2019 timeframe. I'm going to talk about some insights that we got there. We do, uh, focus on partner engagement. I'm going to talk about our website where it shows and documents, um, many of the conversations that we're having with different groups, and we're trying to create that and expand that website as we have continued conversations. We, we continue with people-first, uh, community fairs. Those, uh, we have moved those to virtual online sessions. Uh, it's a little bit harder for folks to do. We are going to continue to, to try to use other technologies, regular phone calls, things like that, but we do work with the council members to do the community-first fairs. We, we have public input sessions. They're typically around major strategies and activities, and I want to thank the board for being available for our November 2020 session that we just had. And again, we're always monitoring, um, surveys. Some of them are interactive, some of them are, um, of online, different, different activities. But our perspective is, we always want to gauge where the wide range of thoughts are about what the company can do better, to give us the ability to understand those sentiments and guide us on how we're doing and where we can improve. Going on to, uh, regular slide number 5. So, in 2019, the, the important point of, of asking customers questions is to, to see what they think. So, in 2019, we got some customer insights, and these came from focus groups. The focus groups were, uh, group of residential customers, small business, and then larger, uh, business customers. And some of that's online, some of that's, uh, in person. But two of the major insights that I just wanted to highlight again, and, and the board has seen the, the major takeaways from this, from the insights that we got in 2019, was, uh, you've got to connect with us, stay in touch with us, keep, even a quick commercial would help. And another would be, maybe, uh, they should have more media. I came in the door right, uh, uptight about our rate hike, and that was, we were, we were always thinking about a rate hike, because we never know when we exactly need one, so this is what the customer was experiencing. And they went on to say, "But now that we've discussed everything, and you see the innovation, and it, it makes it a little more palatable." And I think our insights that we've taken from that is that we've just got to keep talking to folks to tell them about the things that we're trying to do, and how we're trying to use innovation and technology to reach the goals that the community has. Going on to PDF slide number 6. Um, and again, as I said, we, we are trying on our website to, to document, you know, having more conversations with folks, how can we do that? And we also think that people are interested, and they want to know what, what is, uh, the, uh, San Antonio, uh, Manufacturing Association thinks? What does the environmental group think? Um, and then we're open to all types of new organizations that might want additional information, uh, on what we're doing. The Military Officers Association of America, the Alamo Chapter, they wanted us to speak to them. We also have been talking to, um, an executive solar advisory committee, group of, of folks that have helped with rooftop and want to help us improve those programs. So, again, there's a website. People will be able to see that when they, when they see the online version, but if you go out to our website and you look at our, our stakeholder engagement page, you will see that, and we will continue to share information publicly so people can know what's happening. I'm going to go on to the next, uh, slide, uh, my slide number 7. And again, we always bring in pillars. The pillars are important. It is important for us to think about everything that's going on. And, um, it sounds redundant, but really appropriate, when we have to think about maintaining reliability. We always think about customer affordability, the security of the systems that we manage, the safety of the, around the assets and the services that we provide, environmental responsibility is, continues, and that we've been on this, this journey for decades now. And then the focus on resiliency, and again, that one's probably the one that's a little bit more nebulous, but it's, it's, it's how fast you, the system can recover. If there is some type of disruption on the grid, how fast can it recover? Is it just a blink, or are there outages that occur, and how fast can we respond to that? And we do all of that on, on the foundation of financial responsibility. And we are, again, currently one of the highest-rated utilities in the nation. Those are, go from the big behemoths, the IOUs, to the smaller. And that is, again, not been because of CPS Energy, but because of our citizens and how well we have worked together to solve solutions and made it, make the services better, provided more of the benefits of any market across the, the globe, and really tried to keep forging ahead to evolve and approve, improve. PDF number 8. And I'm, I'm highlighting these again, at, just to highlight again, these are things that we keep getting asked about from different groups. And so, we have, uh, continued to talk about the fact that we may need a rate increase. And, um, every year we may need a rate increase. Our track record is, we haven't had a rate increase in 10 years, and the last one was six years ago. And we always do all we can to make sure that we, we work hard at controlling our costs and keeping the bills as low as possible. And that's, that's, that's a great track record. There aren't many utilities that can state that and be as progressive as CPS Energy has been over the years. And we've also, because the way that the community decided, the community decided to own its own generation many, many years ago. And so, we have a very diverse portfolio of power, and that diverse portfolio of power protects the community from having to buy, uh, buy energy on the market when those prices spike. And, uh, from time to time, they do. Right now, we're seeing a really, um, muted market. We don't see a ton of spikes. It happens periodically, but, but still, the generating plants that we have protect the community from the exposures of price spikes. Uh, again, on, uh, we keep getting asked, again, how are we doing in terms of our bills compared to other major markets? And we're about to refresh this information. I would say, over the years, we have gone back and forth with Austin. Um, we've been lower than Austin for a while. I think the margin between us and Austin is getting, um, parallel. But I think what's key is, the municipal markets typically do well in comparison to the other major markets. I am talking about non-promotional standard rates, like they, on an annual basis. And again, when you see them, we are, um, well-positioned to have the lowest, some of the lowest bills in Texas. I want to highlight that. And I want to highlight again, that that is still happening with us putting, uh, even a, a higher multiple of investments in terms of our energy efficiency and conservation programs, and as well as our renewables. And highlight again, we're number one in solar today. We're number two, uh, in wind, and we help contribute. Texas being the strongest wind market in the nation. And I will have to highlight again, we've been in wind for 20 years. This isn't, this isn't, uh, an issue of, we don't know what to do. We're doing a lot of things and being very effective. Um, we're moving on to Slide 10. Uh, it hasn't changed. Every time we still go out and talk to folks, they continue to tell us of the six pillars that we have. They always want to make sure that we're thinking about reliability, always wanting to make sure that we're thinking about customer affordability. And I'm going to go on quickly to Slide 11, because it almost is a, is a repeat. But the challenge, they want to know, how are you managing the risk associated with the potential? That if you can't stay reliable, and they are rolling blackouts among, across the state, how are you managing that? And, um, you know, I would say, again, that our flex power bundle is bundled to help mitigate exposures when the sun doesn't shine or the wind doesn't blow. And I would say that we will look at everything we can to make sure that we're putting together a strong package that will perform for the, for the community 24/7/365, as well as perform for the state. And then they want to know, how are we, again, managing the bills? And again, we always compare to the, the other major markets in Texas, both municipal and competitive. We, we compare ourselves, um, to make sure that we know what's going on, that we understand the value, and we understand that we want to keep the bills as, uh, under control as possible, and we want to make sure that we don't cause bill shock. And bill shock can happen when, we're not controlling costs, but you know we're fully committed to that. It can also happen when we try to do a lot at the same time. Trying to do, trying to fix every single thing that we imagine in the future, and try to do it all at once, is the issue. And, um, you have to really plan for these major changes, and you have to time them and sequence them in a way that keeps bills under control. On slide number 11, um, I always want to highlight, the rating agencies are watching. They, they look at our headlines. They watch what they're do, what, uh, what they're doing. Um, we continue to talk to them and provide them information. They continue to have opinions about how municipal markets are going, but they very much are paying attention to San Antonio. Um, and so, I, I highlight it, and I'm going to always highlight it, um, that the, the challenge isn't that we don't have issues. Uh, yes, the problem is, sometimes you're a victim of your own best record. Because we haven't done a lot of rate increases over the last 10 years, that is a challenge for the community. It's great that we have it under control, but that's why I always say, everything you do has a benefit and a challenge, or it has a challenge and an opportunity for improvement. So, they do worry, and here we are in the middle of COVID and all trying to work our way out of it. They know it's going to be super difficult for us to work through it. But I would still say that the tipping point of how they view San Antonio has to deal with their concerns, and it's quoted on this last page here, "The recent position was, uh, petition was proposed that would revise the governance and management structure of the utility, as well as institute certain carbon reduction and rate policies. Fitch views the proposed governance change as a potential asymmetric additive risk consideration." That has been the tipping point for San Antonio right now. And just a generally, um, the general landscape from a political view is something that they look at as a concern, and this is validated through, um, their report. It's also validated through our, uh, conversations with them. So, but it's not all, um, about pressure. We move on to Slide 13. Um, we are getting a tremendous amount of positive feedback relative our approach. Our flexible path forward, in general, has been perceived as a strong way to move forward to help with the, the decarbonization commitment that has been made by the city. And accordingly, we're starting to see a lot of good press globally associated with the Flex Power Bundle. And we've announced, uh, the ability for us to, early in January, also look at what we can do from a global standpoint. What can people tell us about the Flex Step Program, um, our ability to really do a more long-term promotion with, with that, with that program can be. So, these are driving a lot of positivity outside of our community. A lot of people interest and really feel San Antonio is a great place to keep making improvements, and again, move to, uh, net carbon emissions. Um, Slide 14 highlights, we continue to get a lot of questions, what are, um, what has done so far. And, uh, so, our environmental report is available, and we will start to work on our 2020 environmental report in the spring of next year. Going on to Slide 15, um, questions about, well, how are we doing versus, versus Texas? And so, it is great that we have a ton of wind, uh, in our market. We are increasing as a state our investments in solar, and, and it's not as much as people would think today, and that's why the Flex Power Bundle, when it has up to 900 megawatts of solar, is so enticing. And it has this ability for us to increase our investments in renewable energy, particularly solar. Wind is, is very well penetrated in Texas, but, but solar is not yet, and so, our initiatives and others around the state will help change, uh, the direction. One of the challenges is that you'll continue to see is the level of battery storage currently, energy storage of any type, currently in the market is fairly low. And so, we're going to have to manage and optimize that. The more investments that happen that are effective, uh, that as we also be able to look at the longer duration of energy storage options that are out there, that is going to change. But I want to highlight, we exist in the Texas market, so these, these differences, heavy in wind, moderate in solar, and low in energy capacity, are things that we're going to have to take into consideration in terms of the performance of the grid and how all the operators work well together. Going on to Slide 16, this is the, the comparison of the bills, and when you look at it, um, this is the, the data that we took a, a couple of months ago. Again, we will update soon with the third quarter information. San Antonio's bill stands at about $141 a month on average. This is average, your highs of your years and your lows of your, everything over your 12 months, it comes with an average. The next closest one is Austin at about $145, pretty close. And I would tell you again, that's going to start to narrow. And then what we tried to do, uh, over the last couple of months is give you an idea about the estimate of what we're speaking of if, for example, we take on one of the recommendations, which is to triple size the size of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Program. And what we said is, that incremental investment is about seven bucks on top of what we currently spend. That would increase our bill above Austin. We'd go to about $149. Above us would be El Paso at $151, Dallas at $156. And then we inserted another option. What if we also did STEP, and we closed the coal unit? And we, and basically, a lot of that is stranded cost with the replacement of the renewables. And that would take us to $160 a month. So, you're, you're almost at about $20 more a month when you get to that category. And then you go after that. Above us would be Houston at $160, almost $161, and then Corpus Christi at $163. Now, again, this doesn't assume everyone, every, uh, uh, community is doing something, um, different. They're looking at renewables, so this is a moving target, but it's really important, and we use this kind of data to gauge where we are. And bill impact is a really important thing to think about all the time. Moving on to Slide 17, and, um, I provided this one to give a little bit more context about STEP, because the question is, what, what could we do? And I, what I want to highlight is, at, at the $70 million, uh, investment we have a, a year, that costs everyone, every resident, about $3.70 a month. If you go to the, the, the third line in the, in the table, and we triple it, so just multiply it by three, that's $210, uh, $210 million, excuse me, a month. That's a huge increase. And if you took, if you said that the difference is spend over the 10 years on average, so $70, $70 million a year over 10 years, is $700 million versus $210 million over 10 years is $2.1 billion. And what happens is, we move from a monthly investment of $3.69 to $11.07. And what we've always said, again, for customer affordability, we need to be thinking about, is this the best choice? It could be. Um, energy efficiency dollars usually are very effective. You can get them promptly. There are challenges with them, though, because you, you typically get the benef, the biggest benefits early in your program. The more you put money into energy efficiency and conservation, it just gets harder and harder. It's just, it's just a, a steepness to the curve to do it. But we can do it. It would, when we get to $11.07, that's above what we surveyed, what people think. People have generally told us over the last couple of years, $5 is a comfort point. If they're interested, it's about $5. Once you get over $5, they question whether that's where we should spend the next, uh, the next dollar. Should it be on STEP, or should it be on closing the coal units, or should it be on something else? And so, these are the kind of discussions that we continue to, to, uh, want to have with people to make sure that we can understand what they're proposing to us, make sure that they can understand the, the things that we have to manage. We have an obligation to make sure that people know the impact of these programs, and again, figure out what choices really work for them. I'm going to move on to Slide 18, because I want to give this, um, some, some ideas of what we're talking about here. So, this is a, a slide of potential bill impact, and these are rough numbers and rough estimates. So, I have a, a table here, and at the low end of the spectrum, we think following the flexible path. And again, we don't have the results back from the Flex Power Bundle. The, the, you, uh, board members, you've asked us, Chris, Dr. Chris Uster is working on this with his team, how can we move faster on the Flex Power Bundle? We're excited about it, and he's going to talk a bit about it, uh, later. But in general, we think that the cost of the Flex Power Bundle increase for what we're proposing generally could range between $2 and $5. But again, that's going to change. It depends on, on what responses we really get. Hopefully, they're going to be they're going to be great, $2 to $5. But if you look again, the incremental cost of step is seven bucks, and then the incremental cost of spruce, closing both sprucing, is, is at least 12 bucks. So what do we really want to do? Where do we really want to go, and how do we want to do that? It's not, these are not decisions in isolation, they're cumulative decisions. And the bigger thing I want to indicate is, um, yes, I have talked about a potential rate case, because ultimately, the same pressures that our customers are having, and we are here to help them, and we're going to work and focus on them, is the same pressures that we are having. So these amounts don't include, don't include what it would cost to maintain operations and make sure that we're focused, again, on reliability and other things that have to be invested in, resilience, safety, and security. They also don't take into consideration growth. And as much as people don't want to accommodate growth, growth means jobs, growth drives the community, it helps people manage out of the challenges that they have. Right now, what we need are more jobs to help the community recover. But, but what we're saying is, on top of these numbers, we're going to have to have money to support the operations of the company. So, so let's say we want to do all of this together, well, easily, we're talking somewhere $30 plus dollars a month, and these are not secret, and again, we'd be glad to talk to everybody about it, what choices do we really want to make? The plans mean a lot to us from the standpoint of they deliver reliability. We're not emotionally connected to plans, they help us serve, that's why they're important. But we can change. We do have to worry about our employees who have devoted their lives to operate these plans for the benefit of these, of the companies. So we don't make arbitrary decisions to close, but we are definitely open to transition to other technologies, and that's why the Flex Power Bundle and monitoring technology matters. We've got to figure out how to do this, how to do it affordable, and how not to become the most expensive market in Texas. I'm going to go on to slide 19, um, and just generally, again, say that we continue to survey customers, and we're, we, we know it's important that we explain, and we give them a, a full range of information, and it's tough, people are really busy, but we keep working on it. We do continue to see high marks in the things that we're doing, we know we got to do more, we know we have to communicate more, but maybe 2.9 in terms of survey results is a strong level of result, and it continues to stay fairly stable. We know that's not a guarantee, we know we have to keep working on that. Um, slide 20 is, again, we believe that positivity, constructively working with folks, trying to help make the right decisions together for San Antonio, which has worked well for decades, is the right way to move forward. And we do want to make sure that people know about the positive things we're doing. So once again, uh, thank you Mayor for helping us get the Flex Power Bundle launched. Um, I want to thank VIA, we, we are exploring renewable natural gas. We can't over-leverage in renewable natural gas, but it is helpful. Methane comes off of the, off of the, um, the, the waste dumps around town, it comes off naturally, and this is a way to contain that methane, and then change the chemistry of it, and then help improve the quality of the gas that we have. So that's something that we're working on VIA with. And then we just, uh, launched a, a technology solution with the City of San Antonio and with Itron and AT&amp;T, where we're looking at smart lighting. To really help keep working on energy solutions that help the city function better, we are committed to that. And so again, we do have customers that respond very well to our ability to keep working on technology. I'm moving on to slide 21, getting close to the end here. I do want to highlight that I am participating, and so is our Mayor, Mr. Burke, with, uh, excuse me, with, um, a upcoming session, and it's Denton's and Keystone, two organizations that are nationally known, Keystone is nationally known, and then, um, then, then Denton's is a, a large global firm, and we were able to get a few additional folks to have a discussion about decarbonization, particularly under the Biden era. Um, and every president, as we all know, have their own approaches to the environment and to energy. We believe that there will be significant differences, and we think that from that standpoint, we're hopeful that, under his administration, perhaps there's additional clarity, and maybe even more importantly, that there could be more funds that come to San Antonio, because San Antonio is a key city that's doing a lot of the great things, so why not us? Why not get more funding to help us make this transition, um, into the future? We also have the head of EPRI, the Electric Power Research Institute, Arshad Montour, he's the new, um, CEO of that organization, and Ernie Muniz, um, who was the prior Secretary of Energy, he is going to give a keynote and talk about that transition, what it might look like. And then Clint Vince, uh, who heads up the Energy Practice Globally, um, he's also going to help facilitate that discussion. We invite everyone to join in and kind of listen and see what, see what thoughts and ideas you have, and I think there'll also be the opportunity for people to post questions. So, and I will follow up and see that, um, we can, we can try to get a handle on those questions and see how we can also share those, um, in San Antonio, and then what our views on them about San Antonio. So, on slide 22, I'm, I'm showing the same slide again, that we want to continue our engagement. Uh, most of our relationships with people across the city are very, very strong, but in the case of the environmental stakeholders, we understand that our relationship is not in a great place. We continue to want to speak to them, to talk to them, um, we think that's still important. We think, again, San Antonio is known for its collaboration, we have continually made offers, and we will continue to make offers to sit down. It's, it, you know, I wrote, um, an op-ed a couple of years ago that said these conversations were going to be tough, and they're tough because there, there, there are a lot of choices that can be made, and it doesn't mean that you can always say, I just want to do this and it's easy, it's a, it's a conversation and a jerk. So we will do our best to, to outreach again, because we know how important it is for the, for the future of San Antonio, that we're working together, and that we're looking for positive ways to move forward. And with that, I will, in my presentation, to see if there's any comments or, or, um, context or thoughts that any of the board members want to share with me.
Uh, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is, uh, this is Willie Smackey, I'd just, um, like to make a comment and, uh, on this, uh, outstanding pres, uh, presentation from our CEO on her report, uh, but I'd like to go back to a couple of things that, that she shared with us, and I'd like to visit with a couple of things that I, that I heard earlier, uh, from, uh, one of the public speakers. And, uh, in reviewing all the, the transaction, the letters from Kathy Garcia, uh, from our CEO, and from other community groups, you know, I, I have them right in front of me and I've read them, but I would like to say to our CEO, outstanding, uh, presentation, and, uh, the public comment on, uh, relations reset, uh, share with our, our CEO, relations, reset, and public trust. Uh, uh, being a public entity, that's something that, that, that we take dear to our heart, is, is continue to, uh, to plan and to work on public trust. You know, uh, I, I read the, the magazine article on our CEO being decorated with the CEO magazine, and all the, uh, all the accolades and decorations our, our company, uh, the, CPS Energy has received under Paula Gold Williams', um, leadership, her executive team, and all the employees of C, of CPS Energy, because the CEO is only as good as the team underneath her, uh, any leadership. And she's demonstrated that by always complimenting her team and putting them straight, putting them forward, I appreciate that. However, uh, uh, Ms. Gold Williams, you mentioned something, a transition. Uh, from the very first time we had our first, uh, meeting, we talked about the transition plan to articulate how we move from fossil fuel to more green or renewables. We talked about that since the second month I've been on this board. The key that she said earlier, uh, to transition plan, we have to continue to do a better job, a good job, in articulating a transition plan to the community, the public, groups, and individuals, so that we are transparent on our transition. I would like to see our transition plan, because there's been some miscommunication or misunderstanding, be presented to groups for the next five and 10 years, because always remember, people always think, not about 15, 20 years, what have you done for me lately? But you have shared with me the transition plan, and I, I'm reading and hearing all this, and I'm seeing different from what you've shared to me, and I would appreciate this, when you meet with the different groups and make a conscious and super effort that you always do in meeting with these groups, and your leadership team, meeting with them, and explaining the, uh, uh, and sharing and working, not explaining and sharing and working with, working with, with them, but individuals are part of the plan, because it makes a difference when you in on the plan, you buy in on the plan. So I would like to see us continue to strive on that, and you hear, I didn't say a, just a plan, I said a transition plan, and sharing that for the next five to 10 years. Thank you, uh, Ms. Chairman and Madam CEO.
Thank you, sir, I will get on that, and that's a, the great way, I mean, we definitely need to sharpen how we talk and what we do and keep everything going, so I appreciate that feedback, and I will make sure that the team and I follow up.
Chairman, this is Ron.
Yes, sir, go ahead, go ahead.
May I jump in the queue here? Yeah, just to, just to, uh, follow up what Dr. Smackey said, um, I think that would be very, very helpful, um, and if we could get that briefing to include particularly the, um, you know, what, what's baked into the assumptions on page 18 of the report, Paula?
Yes, sir.
I think more information, the better, so we can understand, um, you know, the different choices and, and, um, pressures that we'll face as we move forward on, on, on these options as we assemble a transition plan. I think that level of dialogue, I think, is one that, that we're ready to have, and, you know, it, it will be readily apparent what, what the, what the options are and, and what the cost for different decisions that we'll have to make. So I, I think this is a great transition point, um, and I like what Dr. Smackey said in terms of the next steps. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir, I will follow up, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other, uh, questions or comments? Um, just going Williams, uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm proud that San Antonio's been designated as a shining city by Environment Texas, and, and this, uh, number one ranking we have in the state, and number eight, and number five in the country for solar capacity. And so, um, it's something we talked about at the last meeting, um, as we look at, uh, the vision of the Flex Power Bundle, uh, where we're adding, um, 900 megawatts of solar. And again, uh, uh, I'd, I'd like for you to, um, confirm, if, if we're successful in that vision, where will that take us in terms of, uh, our ranking nationally in solar?
Well, let me, um, let me chime in a bit, and then, uh, Dr. Euster can try to, uh, you know, in, improve on my, my initial comment. We did do an initial look at it, it's substantial, but by itself with 900 megawatts would not take us to number one, but it would move us up. So if we were number five in the nation, I think we estimated that we could go up to three. It does depend on what everybody else is doing. Um, I will say this, though, that the Flex Power Bundle doesn't complete the transition, it's like the first step. And Dr. Euster would often say, there's going to be a 2.0 and a 3.0, there has to be when you're trying to, when you're trying to potentially transition fossil fuels as, as heavy a capacity that exists in, in, you got multiple transitions. So while this one may not move us to one, trying to, you know, figure out what the next iterations are, uh, could get us to number one. Dr. Euster, you want to chime into that?
Yes, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yep. Uh, it's definitely going to move us up, uh, quite a bit. Um, I, I don't have the numbers here in front of me, but I think LADWP is, is, uh, I think number one. I, I think by about 400 to 500 megawatts, we can get to the, uh, uh, the exact numbers, but, so the 900 certainly would, if all of that showed up in the City of San Antonio, because that report measures, uh, how much solar is within the City of San Antonio, because it measures cities. So to the degree that that solar shows up within City of San Antonio, and we expect a lot of it will, because we're looking for solar to come onto our distribution line, we could get to number one. But the pause point is, uh, we know we're going to move up significantly with this deal, we're at, you know, we're adding, uh, you know, it's going to triple the amount of solar in our generation mix, um, so it's going to be a big, big deal, but we won't know whether we're number one until we ink the contracts and we really know where all that solar shows up.
So it, it, it's, but it's, it's a, it's a possibility that when, when, when the debt settles, we could be number one in the nation.
Yeah, absolutely, possibility.
Thank you, Dr. Euster. Any other, uh, questions or comments? If, hearing none, let's move to agenda item six, a year in review, dedicated service. Ms. Gold Williams, did you want to introduce this, or should we just go directly to Rudy Garson?
We should just move on.
All right, Mr. Garson.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and trustees, I want to thank Paula for asking me to share the great work that our employees are doing on behalf of our customers. This is, this is the year in review related to dedicated service, and despite the challenges that we've seen in 2020, our employees have continued delivering outstanding service, and others have taken notice, and I'm going to take you through a few slides to reinforce that fact. The objective today really is to review the benefits to our customers of the dedicated service by our employees in 2020. Uh, if you follow me to slot, to PDF slide six, uh, the agenda, we're really going to talk about how our people-first culture translates into value for our customers and community, and all the great accolades that our employees have received as, as a result of just doing their jobs. So if you follow me to PDF slide seven, these pictures are pictures of our employees in action this year, wearing their mask, continuing to engage, continuing to provide excellent service, on the, you know, the, the video conferencing with our customers, providing educational, uh, you know, programs, you know, we're essential workers, but the commitment of our people during this year just really drives home the fact that our people-first philosophy, philosophy really does deliver value, uh, and, and is being noticed. So if you, if you follow me to PDF slide eight, this is really the trinity of our business for San Antonio. We look at our customers and the, the service we're providing them, the value we're providing back to our community, all, you know, at the same time, taking care of our cus, of our employees, as really the trinity of, of what people-first means for CPS Energy. And we consider all 3,100 employees as people-first champions, they, just based on the actions that they bring to the table for our customers each and every day. If you follow me on the PDF slide nine, this really is intended to create a win-win-win situation for that, that trinity of value we're trying to deliver for our customers, community, and employees. So if you follow me to PDF slide 10, we've delivered helpful programs throughout this year, really, it, it's all about being proactive and how that proactivity on behalf of our employees has translated into service for our customers. We suspended disconnects almost immediately in March of 2020, that will not be restarted this year, we've got a program and a system that we're looking at to consider economic indicators and overall, the, the overall, uh, uh, situation of our economy here locally, to determine, you know, when it might be appropriate for us to, to relive the disconnects, but it's not happening, uh, obviously, this year, and, and really, we're looking in, you know, the next year before we even get to a point of, of considering that. We, we waive late fees on payment plans, it's important for customers to, to call us or to pick up the phone when we call them, to talk about what we can do to provide assistance. It's not just about payment plans, the outbound calls, and, and I'll show you some stats here in, in a little bit, have really taken our approach to being customer-centric to a whole nother level. Applying affordability discounts to customers who may not have even known that program was out there has been a real opportunity for us, as well as other programs related to our senior citizens. as well as other programs related to our senior assistance discount, the assistance we provide to veterans. REIT, we have done a great job working with our partners at City of San Antonio and Bear County to continue to deliver maximum affordability assistance through our REIT partnership. And we've actually been able to increase the dollars available to our customers through REIT. And of course, collaborating with our governmental partners across the community on CareZap funding has also allowed us to deliver value for our customers. If you move on to PDF Slide Eleven, when I talk about core, core is our customer outreach resource effort. And that is the, the mechanism by which we have taken 40 employees and, and really parsed them out from our workforce to do outbound calls every day. We call anywhere from 100 to 400 or 500 customers a day. And we've reached over 44,000 customers now that we've been able to reach since June 15. Fifty-six percent of those customers have answered. Thirty-eight percent of those customers have been put on payment plans. We, we've got some information in the appendix on feedback that we've received directly from customers. But every customer we have called and we've been able to maintain contact with has been appreciative, appreciative of the proactive efforts that we've undertaken. And to date, that number actually is, is, is low, because every day it continues to climb. We're actually up to about 17 million, 250,000, uh, uh, building assistance that we have made arrangements for our customers. So we are not sitting on our hands waiting for our customers to call us. Our employees have worked really hard to make a difference in our community as it relates to our outbound call efforts. If you join me in PDF Slide Twelve, this year, I, myself and my son, uh, were able to participate in a cruise giving event where we were able to safely deliver 40 Thanksgiving meals to our families. Again, this year has been different. Normally, we're, we are delivering meals to, uh, homes with cases that we work with council offices across the community each and every day. Uh, I'm proud of the fact that our crew team was able to safely, uh, make those arrangements to continue that program for this year. If you move on to PDF Slide Thirteen, the United Way, we are a, a, a significant giver of the United Way, uh, through our employees. Given them the year that we've had, we were concerned that we might not be able to meet our goal. But I'm pleased to present, uh, to the board that not only did we meet our goal, we exceeded our goal of a million dollars. We're right up around 1.15 million dollars. And that just speaks to the heart our employees have for, for giving back to our community. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize everyone involved in, uh, the delivery of that program for our community this year. And of course, our employees for continuing to give back. If you follow me to PDF Slide Fourteen, again, Bearfax is a new, uh, is a new program for, for Bear County. It is an independent, uh, survey of voters in our community. And, and consistently through the three surveys that have been conducted thus far, CPS Energy continues to rank among the highest of, of those governmental entities providing, uh, services for our customers. We started off, you know, the first quarter survey at a 73, 73% approval rate overall. That number actually went up to 77% by the large. We believe because of the proactive outreach that we were doing by calling customers and helping to connect customers to that assistance available in the community. Uh, after the summer, we, we would expect to see a dip just as a result of, of the heat and billing and, and things that, that factor into customer sentiment. But we still saw close to 70% approval rate. And we're, and that happens because our employees are doing their jobs each and every day in spite of the difficult circumstances that we've seen. If you follow me to Slide, PDF Slide Fifteen, I want to move into a very important pillar, guiding pillar of ours with respect to environmental responsibility. This year, we've seen a number of organizations recognize CPS Energy for the, the great work that we do, that we're doing. Again, we've gotten recognized by Environment Texas as the shining city for this year. Uh, we've also been recognized by the Southern Gas Association for our environmental excellence and stewardship of the environment. And of course, uh, Frost and Sullivan has also, uh, recognized us for, uh, energy best, best practices as it relates to our resourcefulness in, uh, with our energy efficiency and demand response programs. And all of that was wrapped up in our Environmental Sustainability and Stewardship Report. We're very proud to report on the great things that we're doing year in and year out to try to continue to improve the environment in San Antonio and across the globe. And so, so we've seen a number of recognitions that we're very proud of this year. If you move on with me to PDF Slide Sixteen, there's an organization called CDP that takes a look at local action being conducted really across the globe and awarded San Antonio. And this is a community partnership recognition. This isn't anything alone that CPS Energy is, is responsible for. This is our community, San Antonio, Bear County. We were only one of 25 cities in the United States to be recognized for our efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We were the only city in Texas to be recognized in that fashion. Very proud of the fact that our efforts here locally to, to take action is being recognized on a global basis. And I wanted to, to share this A-list recognition of 88 global cities, San Antonio being one of them, that we're very, very proud to be a partner, uh, in this effort. I'm now going to move into PDF Slide Seventeen. The diligent service provided by our employees continues to be recognized across many, uh, diverse industry organizations. I want to, these are just a cross-section of a few of the employees our awards have received. Brandon Pixley, uh, one of our, our great leaders in our corporate, in our security division under Shannon Ramirez, uh, has been accepted to the Operational Technology Defender Fellowship from Idaho National Laboratory. That is a very, very select group of individuals who get that honor. And we're very honored that, uh, the work that Brandon Pixley is doing in cybersecurity allowed him the opportunity to be selected for that fellowship. Melissa Sorolla, my own Senior Director over Corporate Communications and Marketing, was given the Patriot Award for Department of Defense and recognition of our, our company's support of the National Guard and reservists that work for CPS Energy. We've got so many, uh, you know, uh, either, uh, reserve duty or formerly active duty military members that are employees. And we have had a couple of deployments in our area that were recognized by the Department of Defense for keeping that job safe and inviting them back to join us once their service to our country, uh, was complete. Amelia Batters, uh, on the analytics side, was named an Analytics Ambassador by the utility analytics organization. Again, that is just a recognition that we continue to push forward on our use of data and analytics and technology to better serve and more efficiently serve our customers. And then Renee Garner was awarded for her excellence in project management and government technology. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you'll be, you'll be happy to know that was specifically related to our support of the Alamo Area Regional Radio System, which we're partners of with the, uh, City of San Antonio and Bear County. Uh, and, and again, all of these awards are just a cross-section of the excellent recognition that our employees receive each and every day for just doing their jobs. If you join me with PDF Slide, uh, uh, let's see, Eighteen, our CEO, and, and this was discussed, uh, previously, but our CEO, Paul Gold Williams, our employees are proud of our leader for continuing to, to be recognized among her peers across the country, across the globe. Of course, here locally, she was named Woman of the Year by the San Antonio Business Journal. An honor that she shared on behalf of our employees that we're very proud of. She can, she, she was recently named an exceptional, uh, uh, an exceptional leader in Texas from Texas CEO Magazine. That is specifically related to the work that she continues to do, uh, related to the pandemic, for not only our employees, for our community. A CEO who gets it from the National Safety Council, which is not a, an award that is given out lightly, which we're very proud of, that safety continues to be one of our foundational guiding pillars for, for CPS Energy. And most recently, she was, uh, recognized as the finalist for Chief Executive of the Year with S and P Global Plaza. And I want to, I want to share with you a few statistics that are, that are really impressive from, from, from just the, the global standpoint. She's one of 10 that were recognized in that category. She was one of only three in the United States that were, was recognized in that CEO category. She was the only Texan and the only female executive CEO, uh, that was recognized. She was surrounded globally by CEOs from Saudi Arabia, the United Arab Emirates, Spain, India, China. This is just a great example of our think global, act local mentality and how the world is recognizing the job that CPS Energy is doing for our community. So if you follow me to PDF Slide Nineteen, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am just really proud. We, the leadership team is really proud of the work our, our employees continue to do to remain committed to helping our customers, to reach out and help our community in this time of need to try to recover from this horrible pandemic. And we continue driving for employee excellence in everything that we do. So, Mr. Chairman, I will stop there and answer any questions you may have.
Um, any questions or comments for Mr. Garza? Mr. Garza, um, so I, I was looking at, uh, something that you actually put in the appendix. And I, I've always been proud, uh, of how we've been a People First organization. And I was really touched by the comments that we're receiving from our customers about all these calls that you're making. And if you don't mind, uh, I, I think I would like for you to read in the record, uh, some or maybe all of those comments. Uh, they're on your Slide Twenty-three, uh, under, under the title, What Our Customers Say?
Yes, sir. I will be happy to do so. And, Mr. Chairman, I would just tell you that I get on a call, uh, once a month with the employees that are doing this work. And the, the emotion and the commitment that our employees have to, to taking time to, to listen to customers who may not have anybody else to talk to but the CPS Energy, Energy Advisor or crew member on the other end of the phone. And these really are verbatims of the type of feedback we receive on these calls. And, and I'll go ahead and read those into the record. Uh, the first one, "I expected a call about my past due bill. What I received was an offer to help. I'm so glad I answered the phone." That was, uh, one of our valued customers. Another valued customer said, "This call has lifted a burden off of my shoulders. I didn't know how I would pay this bill and I was afraid it would catch up to me. God bless CPS Energy." Uh, third customer stated, "CPS Energy has proven that they are doing everything they can for customers during this pandemic, showing we are in this together." The fourth, uh, uh, piece of feedback we received, "I didn't know there was, uh, there was assistance available and that CPS Energy was offering resources that don't even involve the utility bill. I'm so grateful that you reached out." And finally, the last example that we provided to you, "My family has really suffered because of COVID-19 and I didn't know where to turn. I am so grateful for CPS Energy calling to offer help. No one else has done anything like this."
Thank you for doing that. That, as I said, that, those comments touched me. And thank you for that wonderful work all of you all are doing. And, and please pass that along, uh, to all the people you're working with on, on this.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions or comments on Agenda Item Six? All right, um, hearing none, let's move to Agenda Item Seven, Additional Updates, um, and, and Seven A is Cost Savings, Employee Benefits. Uh, Ms. Deborah Wayne Scott. And Ms. Gold Williams, do you want to introduce this or just go directly to Ms. Wayne Scott?
We can proceed, sir. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, then, please.
Thank you, Chair, Dean and Trustees. Good afternoon. Uh, we're on PDF Page Twenty-nine. Thank you for the opportunity to present today on the efforts that we've been, um, having on cost management related to employee benefits. Uh, moving on to PDF Page Thirty, for the objectives and takeaways, we'll discuss the value provided by our benefits consultants who we engaged in fiscal year 2018. They made a significant impact on our ability to manage the rising cost of healthcare. Um, we'll review the health plan cost savings and discuss how those savings have enabled us to keep health plan costs manageable. Moving on to PDF Page Thirty-one, to the agenda, we'll provide some details on our benefits consultants that we engaged in fiscal year 2018. We'll go through some of the details on specific cost management efforts, including requests for proposals for our health plan vendor contracts, as well as some design changes that we've made for our wellness program focused on, um, health conditions prevalent in our workforce. And then we'll go through the impact that those cost mitigation efforts have had on our health plan premiums. Moving on to PDF Page Thirty-two, this slide shows the wider way of services provided by our benefits consultants who are Lockton Dunning Benefits. In fiscal year, uh, 2018, after a, um, a thorough solicitation process, we selected Lockton Dunning Benefits as our new benefits consultant. Uh, through our partnership with Lockton, um, the local Lockton team and their, and their local San Antonio office, and the experts that they have on staff at their corporate offices that helped us to mitigate rising health costs. Um, as I said, on the slide shows, uh, so it shows a wide array of the services that they provide, including the various areas that they've helped us with and that we've benefited from. The core benefit plan consulting and actuarial services, financial reporting. They report to us monthly on, um, our health claims costs compared to the funding of those costs. They've helped us with marketing and, uh, vendor selection. They have a compliance practice that helps us to stay abreast of the ever-changing regulations related to employee benefits. They have a proprietary clinical analytics tool that they refer to as InfoLock. It's been immensely helpful to us in analyzing the data to determine where to focus our efforts on the prevalent health conditions in our workforce. They have a clinical and health risk solution services team that has helped us to strategize related to our wellness program and how to evolve our wellness program to focus on those prevalent health conditions that are most costly to our health plan and to our employees and our retirees. At a cost of, of less than about $200,000 annually, Lockton has helped us to realize health benefit savings of about $39 million over a five-year period, with half of that savings benefiting CPS Energy directly. PDF Page Thirty-three, this slide shows the major areas where Lockton has helped us to realize significant savings. The medical plan, they helped us to renegotiate out-of-network discounts for, for our prior health plan vendor at a reduction of about $1 million in the last year of that contract. They helped us to, with the RFP for our health plan vendor and to select that vendor, resulting in an estimated reduction of about $1.5 million annually over the five-year life of that contract related to larger end-network, uh, discounts. For pharmacy savings, their pharmacy division, uh, conducted an RFP for our pharmacy vendor that resulted in a reduction of about $23.7 million over the three-year life of that contract. They also recently helped us to renegotiate the contract terms with our pharmacy vendor for an estimated additional savings of about $8 million over the next two years. And with our wellness program, as I said, they've been a huge help to us in evolving our wellness program over the last two years, moving from an activity-based program to an outcome-based program with efforts focused on health conditions that are most costly to our plan. Moving on to PDF Page Thirty-four, this slide shows the almost $39 million in cost reductions that we'll realize over five years from fiscal 19 through fiscal year 2023. Um, the right side of the table, the last column in the table, the, the blue column shows the total for each of those fiscal years with the $38.6 million in the green box at the bottom of that, right bottom of that table. The bottom of the table, the, the blue row along the bottom of the table shows the cost savings for each of the groups that share in our, um, in, in, in paying for our health insurance benefits, with CPS Energy share about half of the estimated cost reduction. Energy share about half of the estimated cost reduction, or about $19 million for fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2023. The other groups that share when we have cost reductions are those that also share in the cost of our health insurance, which is our employees, the health trust, which covers a portion of the cost of retiree health benefits, and our retirees. All of these groups share when we have cost reductions, and they also share in paying for the cost of that insurance. Moving on to PDF page 35. This graph shows the favorable impact of our wellness program and the impact that it has had on health claims costs. So at the top of the slide, at the top of that graph, you'll see a green line and a blue line. The green line represents claims cost for employees who are fully engaged in our wellness program, while the blue line represents those that are not fully engaged. And for purposes of this analysis, we define engaged as those who completed the activities required to earn the wellness incentive over the two years for fiscal '19 and fiscal year '20. So we engaged Lockton to help us with analyzing the data utilizing their InfoLock analytics tool. We compared the claims cost for those wellness-engaged employees compared to those who were not fully engaged in wellness. We measured both groups beginning in fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year '20. As you can see from the graph, claims costs for those engaged, fully engaged in wellness, were lower than those overall compared to the non-engaged employees. The boxes under the graph show the programs added to the wellness program each year as we analyze the data and determine what health conditions that we should focus on. You'll see in fiscal year '18, we added the Real Appeal Weight Management Program. In fiscal year 2019, we started our outcome-based program. And then in fiscal '20, we added the On-Site Registered Dietitian and the Levango Diabetes Management Program. Based on the programs that we put in place, our employees are learning to manage their health conditions such as diabetes, which is a very prevalent health condition in our workforce. And we found that, given these programs and evolving our wellness program, with those health conditions are becoming more adherent to their medications to better manage their health conditions, which has helped drive down health claims costs. You'll see on the graph, you'll notice the green line, there's an uptick from fiscal '19 to fiscal '20 in claims costs. While this looks like a negative, when we look at the data, it's actually positive. We worked with Lockton to dig into the data and to determine the reason for the uptick in the claims costs. The analysis indicated that diabetes pharmacy claims costs were the reason that those claims were on an uptick. The takeaway from this analysis is really important. And as I said, in fiscal year '20, we added the Levango Diabetes Management Program. And this program has brought more awareness to those with diabetes in our workforce population and helped them to become more adherent to those medications. While managing diabetes is very expensive, not managing it is significantly more expensive. So this is a positive that we are seeing in the data. Moving on to PDF page 36. This slide summarizes the favorable impact on our health plan premiums that has benefited CPS Energy, our employees and our retirees, due to the steps that we've taken in partnership with our benefits consultants to mitigate those rising costs of healthcare. Just to orient you to the slide, the orange line on the graph is the average cost of premiums for employees across the state of Texas for employee-only coverage. The blue line is the cost of that same coverage for CPS Energy employees. You can see from the blue line, an uptick and really a higher trend rate than the orange line from fiscal '19 through fiscal '18. Our rates were increasing faster than the national average. Beginning in fiscal year 2019, we began seeing the benefits of our partnership with Lockton. Just some additional information on the graph, the gray dot represents the year that we engaged Lockton. And you'll see that correlates to the gray box to the right of the graph and the list of the activities that happened in fiscal year '18. That year, they helped us to renegotiate our pharmacy contract, resulting in the significant cost reduction of several million dollars over the three-year life of that contract. We also, in that year, began adding more focused health condition management activities to our wellness program. The blue dot represents fiscal year 2019. That's when we started moving our wellness program to measure health outcomes so that we could focus on the health conditions that are most prevalent in our workforce. The orange dot represents fiscal year '20. That's when we added new health plan vendors with larger claims discounts. We also continued, again, evolving our wellness program by adding new resources focused on the top health conditions in our workforce. I'll direct your attention to the call-out box at the bottom of the slide. Due to all the efforts to effectively manage our costs, it has allowed us to keep health premiums flat going from fiscal '21 into fiscal '22. These efforts have benefited CPS Energy and our customers, as well as our employees and retirees. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Excellent presentation. Any questions or comments?
Chairman Steen?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Garza.
Yes, this is Ed Kelly, trustee Kelly. I just want to let you, the board, know that I, as a member of the Personnel Committee, have had an opportunity to work closely with Deborah Wayne Scott and her team over several years, and I want to congratulate them on excellent work. If you'll look at that chart that she just showed us over on page 36, that is pretty indicative of what you're seeing across the industry. And on other boards that I serve, we're fighting health increase costs in the neighborhood of 8% to 10% a year and like 50% over the last five or six years. So there has been a tremendous problem there with new regulations, advanced healthcare costs, et cetera. And then to look at what she and her team have been able to achieve during that same time period by looking at that bottom blue line really tells you a lot about the work they're doing. So I just want to congratulate them on the tremendous work they're doing and suggest they keep up the great work into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Well said.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I'll pass that on to my team.
This is trustee Gonzalez. I want to echo that. I mean, I'm a small business owner, and our insurance went up significantly this year. Ours particularly is related to COVID. But yes, tremendous work. Keep it up. Insurance gets harder and harder to make it palatable for everyone involved.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Any other questions or comments? All right. Let's move on. So Item 7B is Flex Power Bundle Request for Proposal Launch, and it's Dr. Chris Euston. Ms. Go Williams, do you want to introduce it or to go directly to Dr. Euston?
Nope. Dr. Euston is ready to go, sir.
Go ahead, doctor.
Okay. Thank you, and good afternoon, Chair Steen and trustees. This is an update on our Flex Power Bundle RFP. It launched on November 30th. It's a very exciting effort. It's for up to 900 megawatts of solar. It's almost a gigawatt of solar capacity. We tripled the amount of solar we have in our generation mix, 50 megawatts of energy storage, and an all-source approach to the firming capacity. I do want to highlight that we have incorporated feedback from trustee Dr. Mackey about moving up that timeline to July. We challenged the team. We'll talk a little bit about that here today, as well as the mayor's feedback about potentially releasing some, rewarding some of the more straightforward solar or even solar plus, you know, combined with storage in the spring timeframe. So we've incorporated both those feedback into the timeline that I'll share with you in the pre-show. If you go to PDF page 39, the objectives and takeaways, we want to review the Flex Power Bundle RFP, key components, the milestone, and the accelerated timeline, and provide an overview of communication activities supporting the Flex Power Bundle that we're working with Rudy and his team. PDF page 40, the agendas are, we're going to, again, share our flexible path journey, what's included in the RFP, RFP key dates, the accelerated timeline view, the communications overview, and the all-source RFP announcement. If you go to PDF page 41, and you've seen this chart before, this is our flexible path journey with deliberate changes equalling big impact to the Flex Path, launched by Paula in 2018. We've had a number of milestones to get us to where we're at here, including the retirement of daily coal units, awarding additional solar, achieving the STEP program at 845 megawatts ahead of schedule and under budget. So a number of milestones which has gotten us to our point here where we completed the RFP to really raise the visibility and really get a sense of what kind of technologies are out there, especially around long-duration storage, which enabled us to kind of help launch this RFP on November 30th. If you go to PDF page 42, all of this is grounded in our guiding pillars, and Paula reviewed it in her CEO report. This will be replacing a physical power plant, so it's especially important that, you know, we align with these guiding pillars with the emphasis on reliability, customer affordability, and the environmental responsibility aspect as well, in addition to security, safety, and resiliency. If you go to PDF page 43, this is, again, sort of a reminder of what the RFP profile is. Again, 900 megawatts of solar, 50 megawatts of battery storage, and then the all-source approach to the firming capacity for the solar component. Respondents will have the option to bid on one or multiple resources, so they can pick and choose how they want to respond to this RFP, and we've made it very easy to do that. And so, but at the end of the day, what we're trying to do here is take an integrated approach and transition to a cleaner generation mix that continues to provide reliable, affordable power to our community. If you go to PDF page 44, for the 900 megawatts of solars and the up to 50 megawatt of storage, we are allowing respondents to connect at the transmission level, the distribution level, and even at the community, at community solar projects that can be connected at a community scale level. If you go to PDF page 45, on the all-source, up to 500 megawatts of firming capacity, that will be connected at the transmission or the distribution size, again, to help firm up that capacity on the solar piece. If you go to PDF page 46, this is, these are the key dates. Again, the Flex Power Bundle RFP was issued on November 30th, 2020. We had a pre-bid webcast recording on December 9th, very well attended. I think we've got roughly about 160 companies registered already on our portal. And the announcement to let people know about the RFP went out in 10 different languages across the globe, much like what we did with the RFI. The RFP responses are due February 1st, 2021. So it's a pretty aggressive timeline, and we'll get a little bit more into that, but we think we can do it here. I'll talk a little bit more about the timeline on the next page. The other thing I wanted to highlight is the Flex STEP RFP will be coming soon in January 2021. This is under Rudy Garza's leadership and his team, and we're very excited to see that roll out here next month. And I think there's more to come from Rudy and his team at the January board meeting. If you go to PDF page 47, this is accelerated project timeline. And again, we took the feedback from trustee Dr. Mackey and the mayor in full earnest. This is not a standard RFP. This is not just signing up a PPA in West Texas. This is complex. We're talking about firming capacity. I think Paula, as you know, states it well, that, you know, we have to figure out how to firm up the solar when it's not there. And so we are going to be looking at new technologies. And so we do need to make sure we take the time to do the due diligence and select the best solutions for our community. These will be, you know, 15, 20-year-plus investments. And again, we want to be very thoughtful in how we ultimately select the winners here. Having said that, we did pull out about a month from when the RFPs were due, so now they're due on February 1st, and we pulled out about a month from the evaluation and selection process to get us from that September date, which we shared with the board previously, to the end-of-July date that trustee Dr. Mackey challenges us to get to. The caveat, I would say, is, you know, we are certainly going to aim for this, but, you know, we want to also be flexible depending on the volume of proposals that we're going to get and the complexity, especially around the new technology. We also incorporated in this the mayor's comment of, can we release some of the more standard solar proposals? And so we have a potential award by the end of April on the more straightforward solar projects that are part of this. So we've tried to incorporate both of those, and I think we have a very aggressive timeline for a very complex RFP process, but the team is ready, willing, and able and excited about this process. And so we'll keep the board updated as we continue this project. If you go to PDF page 48, this is, you know, some of the communications that we've done out there. Again, the press release went out in 10 different languages across the globe. We did a Facebook Live chat with Paula, myself, Rudy, Krista Davis, and Melissa Sorola. Melissa told me here this morning that we got over 130,000 views on Facebook Live at that event, so pretty phenomenal for, you know, for those kind of numbers. Again, the mayor has been very visible in terms of promoting this as well. We really appreciate his leadership on this as well. So a lot of good PR that's coming out of this, and I think it only raises the visibility here for this very important strategic project. If you go to PDF page 49, we also want to partner with local groups here in terms of, you know, getting the message out and sharing, you know, the wonderful story here. And so there are a number of local groups, including Alma City Moms, K means What. So we have a number of groups that Melissa and Rudy's organization are partnering with, again, to make sure everyone is aware of this very important strategic project. If you go to PDF page 50, and we don't have it to play here, but both the mayor and Paula did a very nice video with the RFP announcement that went out on November 30th. And my understanding is we have over 22,000 views of that video with the mayor and Paula. And so, again, I think it's a testament to the excitement and the interest in this very strategic project for our community. And with that, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, doctor. Any questions? Yes, Dr. Euston, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Euston for the great effort in reducing that timeline. Thank you, Dr. Euston, and your executive team. Thank you, CEO. Thank you.
I do have a comment. This is trustee Gonzalez. I know there's a need to expedite timeline to meet specific objectives. My question always will be, in the RFP effort, is there a small business component, and especially for local participation?
Yes, you know, we do have, we are interested in local impact, and that is kind of one aspect of this RFP. So we are looking at enabling the local economy, local diverse. I think, you know, that will be part of our process.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're mindful, more than ever, one direct way to impact locally would be an increased qualified small businesses and having a good, you know, component of that. And so I want to thank you. And so I want to thank you again. I believe that innovation often can be driven by smaller organizations working with larger organizations. So I'm glad that you're considering that.
And this is Frank Amraz. Good afternoon. I think I would just add that it is a very complex solicitation, and there's going to be lots of aspects to it, but, you know, clearly, one of the things that's on our minds is the impact in the local community, and whether that's the usage of the folks that are bidding on these PPAs, their commitment to using local companies to actually engineer and construct the project, to actually, you know, mentorship and other opportunities in all the ways that small business, I mean, economic impacts of the projects. I think Doctor Euster mentioned some distribution-level solar projects, and we think that there's some potential to innovate there and do good things for the community. So it is, obviously, it really, you know, full scope. This is a very, very big opportunity, and we're looking carefully at opportunities to impact the local community, go beyond just an award of, you know, of part of the business. I appreciate your question, Trustee Gonzalez.
No, I appreciate it, Frank. And where it makes sense, it makes sense. Where we must, where we need to be creative, we must be creative and thoughtful. I will never put the company at risk just because I want to see an increase in small business participation. So I want to just again, thank you. I'm excited about the future of CPS, especially in this arena. So thank you again, all of you.
Doctor Euster, I have a couple of questions. This is trustee Kelly.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
We've talked a lot in the past that solar is great, but it doesn't help much when the sun's not shining, and that even when the sun is shining, oftentimes, it loses most of its power in the late afternoon when our energy demands are still very, very powerful. Therefore, you put in five-hundred megawatts of firming capacity, and you put in a storage capacity component. Storage is moving very, very slow. As you know, you've even told me the same thing, that to build a storage capacity today, you would have to have a facility that is so large, it would be absolutely insurmountable. So that's moving very slow from everything I read, and is not going to help us for a long time. Therefore, the firming capacity becomes very, very important. Tell me what you expect in the way of firming capacity. What will be some of the ingredients that are actually firm, that you can depend on when the sun's not shining and the wind's not blowing?
Okay, thank you, trustee Kelly, for that question. I think there are a couple of things that, again, our approach to the firming capacity is an all-source. We will look at any technology, whether it's gas, whether it's storage, whether it's hydrogen, we will look at any technology that meets our requirements. And I think the difference with this versus the RFI is there are specific requirements that we are, that we have in the RFP that ultimately companies have to sign up for, and there are performance guarantees around that, you know, liquidated damages. So I think it'll be very interesting to see what the proposals are that we get for the firming capacity on this RFP. What we saw in the RFI is there were some interesting long-duration storage, you know, there's some compressed air solutions that are out there, there's a liquid air project, there's thermal storage, and that's where I think it's going to take a little bit more time to do the additional technology due diligence, to really see how viable they are commercially, you know, to meet the requirements that we have. So I think that's one answer to your question, trustee Kelly. I think the second one is, this is an old gas steam unit, again, built in the sixties and seventies. It does not run year-round. It's not a baseload plant. It runs primarily during the summer, starts, you know, it comes online about ten o'clock in the morning, and runs through ten o'clock at night. And so we have also put in the RFP to look at, from a firming standpoint, different hours of duration to see what kind of bids we get. Four hours of duration, well, we know that's going to likely be lithium-ion batteries. Six hours, it'll be interesting to see if lithium-ion can extend to six hours competitively. We'll see that through the RFP. Twelve hours, or around the clock. So we are giving the market, you know, those time windows around duration, and then what we're going to do is take those and really understand where, how those meet the performance requirements of this particular plant. And that's going to be our approach to resolve the firming capacity question.
Thanks, I agree with that to some extent, Doctor Euster, but I think the firming, I mean, the storage thing is going to be a long time before we can actually depend on it, number one. And number two, there are times when the sun absolutely does not shine, and the wind absolutely does not glow. And so you absolutely have to have firming capacity, period, dot dash. So that question comes back again to what I talked about last time. Rather than going into the market and paying for new firming capacity, why can't we use the firming capacity that we have today? For example, we bought a almost new gas plant a few years ago over in Seguin. It's my understanding it operates very, very effectively, very low emissions. Why, how come that can't be used as firming capacity? And other plants that we have, why do we have to go out and buy all-new firming capacity when we already have a bunch of it?
So trustee Kelly, so the gas plant, the Rio Negales gas plant in Seguin, that was primarily used to replace the dealy capacity that came offline. This Flex Power Bundle will be replacing the Bronig one, two, and three units, so that capacity's coming offline. So our capacity has been sized to meet the needs of our community, and by, because we are taking these units, you know, the Bronig units offline, we have to replace them with some additional firming capacity. So that, the things that we have already are being fully utilized to serve the load. And this Flex Power Bundle, as Paula described, you know, says it eloquently, is it's an integrated approach because it ultimately has to provide affordable, reliable, environmentally responsible power, replacing a physical plant. If we kept that physical plant around, we, yeah, we could use that for firming capacity, but it's sixty-plus years of age. It is losing its reliability, O and M costs are going up, and that's why we have to replace it with additional firming capacity.
Okay, so you're taking nine-hundred megawatts of capacity out of the system then, is what you're saying? Tell me which nine-hundred megawatts it is.
It's the Bronig one, two, and three gas steam units that were built in sixty-six, sixty-eight, and nineteen-seventy.
So you're saying we are not adding to our capacity here, we're just replacing capacity?
With this Flex Power Bundle, we are replacing capacity. Now, the good news is...
How do we handle our growing needs?
Well, you know, we will have to continue to add these Flex Power Bundles, you know, Paula thinks that in your CEO report, there'll be a Flex Power Bundle two, a Flex Power Bundle three, and that, those bundles might look different from this bundle. So as technology evolves, as, you know, as regulation evolves, they might have a different set of components, but ultimately, we will have to continue to add capacity like we are here today.
Do you see most of these bids being, or these offers being, take-or-pay contracts, purchase-power agreements, new plants? What do you see them be? How do we get this?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have a preconceived notion, you know, we want the best possible solution, the best possible deal for San Antonio. You know, PPAs on the renewable side has been the way we've done it in the past because of the, some of the tax credits that we, that we can't qualify for as a nonprofit. But I don't think, we don't, we're not limiting ourselves in how we, how we want to see proposals come in.
And what do you estimate they will cost?
I think ultimately, it's going to be dependent on the proposals that come in. I think Paula showed a chart that, you know, roughly about two dollars for this Flex Power Bundle from a bill ad. But again, that's, we will ultimately know exactly what it is when we get the bids, when we get to the final bids.
Put it in actual dollars. Two dollars doesn't mean anything to me, Doctor Euster.
I'm sorry. Two, I think, two dollars for the average bill.
Two dollars for the average bill, so that would be sixty, fifty or sixty million dollars a year?
I don't, we can get you those numbers. I don't have those.
Well, if that is costing us seventy million dollars a year, at three dollars a month, then this is going to cost us in a normal range, somewhere as close to that then, right?
Yes, but again, we have to replace aging capacity, just like if we build a new power plant, we'd have to invest in that.
How do we pay for this?
I mean, it's part of our overall financial plan that we've laid out.
Well, let's not dream too much without also thinking about the cost, okay?
Yes, sir. Costs are front and center for us, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I have a follow-up comment just real quick, and it really is along the lines of Mr. Kelly's questions about cost. Are we taking into account the potential increase in cybersecurity infrastructure protection costs? Because many of these technologies, I'm assuming, are going to be delivered very differently than traditional forms of delivery.
Yes, security has a seat at the table in terms of evaluating these proposals and these bids.
But my question is, yeah, we need to make sure that, we need to see how that affects our budget, whether we need to increase it, how is that show responsibility, cost is going to, you know, if any, in some of these unique partnerships, how that's going to, I guess, how it's going to be designed. I know it's very complicated right now, we're still in planning stages, but those are just things to be very mindful.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Doctor Euster. Let's move to procurement review, agenda item eight, professional services, and this is context for item nine E1, engineering services for electrical distribution, Mr. Rick Lopez. Mr. Lopez, we fell a little bit behind on our schedule, so if you could, if you could give us some time back, we'd appreciate it. I think I'll have you down here for ten minutes.
Yes, sir, I will definitely speed it up. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Very good, thank you. Good afternoon, chairs, Dean, and board trustees. My name is Rick Lopez, I'm the Director of Distribution Engineering, and my presentation today, as chair is being mentioned, is a procurement preview for procurement item nine E1 of today's conference agenda, titled Engineering Services for Electrical Distribution. Starting on fifty-two, moving to PDF page fifty-three. The objectives and takeaways for this presentation are to provide an overview of distribution engineering and our use of engineering design firms. PDF page fifty-four. The agenda for this presentation, first, I'll provide a review of our guiding pillars, then I'll provide an overview of our distribution engineering team and their responsibilities. I'll provide an overview of our use of engineering design firms, and then I'll close it out with some information on our procurement process, as well as some details on the specific procurement item. PDF page fifty-five. First, we'll start with our guiding pillars. The work that we do in distribution engineering is really focused on the engineering design that drives reliability improvement for our electric distribution system. And in, as part of doing that work, we do utilize external engineering design firms. So the work, this work that we do, and the fact that we leverage these outside firms, all really roll up and support the guiding pillars of reliability, resiliency, and safety. PDF page fifty-six. From an organizational standpoint, as Director of Distribution Engineering, I report to Mr. Richard Medina, who's our Vice President of Grid Transformation and Engineering, and Mr. Medina reports up to Doctor Chris Euster, who of course is our COO. PDF page fifty-seven. As far as our distribution engineering team, it is composed of fifty-six employees that report up through seven different teams within the department. On the slide in front of you, you should see the seven managers that run these different teams. These managers, as well as all the team members, I would like to take this opportunity to talk about the great job that they all do. They really take to heart the mission that we have, which is trying to ensure that we provide the most reliable electric distribution system for our customers, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize them for that. PDF page fifty-eight. In terms of the responsibilities for this team, again, what we do is really focused on the engineering design side of the process. The primary focus is on large, complex system growth and system upgrade projects, grid modernization and automation projects, and other reliability improvement projects. And the work itself consists of generating or creating construction drawings in our GIS system. However, this GIS design depends on our field or our design personnel going out in the field and doing site observations, identifying obstacles or issues out in the field, doing, taking proposal locations, getting in manholes as needed, so a variety of different activities that all have to be done in order to ensure that the final GIS design is going to be a good design and will be something that our construction department will be able to go out and build and do so safely. And as a part of that, we also coordinate closely with our construction department. They've got the experience of doing the work out in the field. Anytime there are any questions or issues about the constructability of a project or any safety concerns, we definitely reach out to them and make sure that we get their input on these projects. So we've got a very good, close relationship with construction as part of this process. PDF page fifty-nine, please. Continuing on with the responsibilities of the team, the types of projects that we work on, and this is not a comprehensive list, just a few examples. These include new circuits to support growth in our system, large underground systems in our substations, converting existing overhead lines to underground for improved reliability, the design of new downtown network vaults, which essentially is referring to services in our downtown area for new large commercials. We also design equipment for distribution automation deployment, and complex utility adjustments for civic improvement projects. Typically, these are roadway widening projects or drainage improvement projects, projects by the city, Bear County, or Tex- dot, and others as well. PDF page sixty. So the benefits of utilizing these engineering design firms are that they provide additional resources to augment our internal engineering design staff, and we do utilize multiple engineering firms for flexibility and continuity. Additionally, these engineering firms support our need for engineering studies or special projects on a needs basis. PDF page sixty-one. So at this point, I'll go ahead and shift the focus of the presentation to some procurement discussion. The first is, you know, there are two types of procurements that we undertake. The first is the RFQ, or Request for Qualifications. This applies for professional services types of procurements, and for these types, we are required to comply with Texas Government Code, Section 2254 dot zero-zero-four. So this is the more stringent of the two procurement processes. The second is the RFP, or Request for Proposal. This one can take into consideration more qualitative attributes than what the RFQ process allows. This here applies more to general services such as construction services. PDF page sixty-two. So for this particular procurement item, being that it is engineering services which qualifies as a professional service, the RFQ process applied, and this is a process that we utilize. And as a part of this process, we did select the most highly qualified vendors. However, as a company, our value-added approach is focusing on growing qualified and diverse, a qualified and diverse vendor pool. a qualified and diverse vendor pool, uh, which includes actively recruiting, uh, small, uh, diverse businesses and engaging with partnership agencies. Uh, we're also looking at driving opportunities to debundle or depa- or, or repackage, um, larger scopes of work into smaller packages that may provide greater opportunities for smaller, uh, companies, smaller businesses, uh, to be able to successfully, uh, get qualified for those, for those, uh, types of projects. And finally, uh, we're also looking at subcontracting plans and vendor mentorship, um, as part of our vendor process. And I would like to point out here, I'm gonna talk about it a little bit more, um, on the next slide, but as part of the, this, uh, particular procurement item, uh, we were successful in having, uh, all of the, uh, vendors that were selected, um, agreed to, uh, provide subcontracting, uh, opportunities for small diverse firms, and we were really, uh, pleased, uh, to be able to, uh, negotiate that with these firms. Uh, PDF page sixty-three. So again, this procurement item is on your consent agenda for today. Uh, we did receive twenty-four proposals, and five engineering firms were selected, all have local offices, and again, all will be providing subcontracting opportunities for small diverse and local firms. The contracts will be for three years and a value of thirty-one point eight million dollars. PDF page sixty-four, that concludes my presentation, I'll take any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Lopez? Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to agenda item nine, which is the consent agenda, and, um, it's a, it's a long list, which I guess I should read into the record, but Ms. Go Williams, there, there was one, uh, that you indicated you might pull?
Yes, sir, I want to pull item nine C. We just didn't have enough time to, uh, close the loop on a couple of items there. We will definitely bring it back in January.
And that's the one where, where you wanna specifically, uh, uh, confer with, with Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, and I think we're gonna have to come back around and just explain to, uh, all the board members, uh, how we can manage to that better, so, yes, sir.
Okay, is, it, it, um, I, I assume there's no objection to that. Then the approval items that we're, we'll be voting on, minutes of the regular board meeting held on October twenty-six, twenty-twenty, a payment to the City of San Antonio for November twenty-twenty. We're skipping C, uh, as we mentioned, uh, then we go to financial services policies, uh, and that includes investment policy, South Texas Project Nuclear Decommissioning Trust, investment policy, financial authorizations and approvals policies for banking, investing, hedging, collateral policy, master, interest rate management policy, and interest price risk management policy. Uh, and then procurement items, um, professional services, engineering services for electric distribution, and professional services, geotechnical engineering services. So those are the items, uh, that, that, that I, that we're seeking approval for, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Ed Kelly, I make that motion. I would like to point out one thing, that if you look at the amount of payment to the City of San Antonio through the month of November, we have remitted almost two hundred and eighty-one million dollars to the city over this period of time, and we still have two months left in this fiscal year, and we are in the midst of a pandemic. That should tell some people a little bit about the value of CPS Energy. We have been talking about our low rates, our strong persistency, our strong record of accomplishment, uh, and renewables, uh, our outstanding employee benefits work, on and on and on. What we have not said is that in spite of all of that, and in view of all of that, we have given the city almost two hundred and eighty-one million dollars towards the general budget. People need to take note of that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thanks for that motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Uh, so the, a motion made by, uh, Mr. Kelly and seconded by Dr. Mackey to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Um, all right, um, Ms. Shelman, will you call the role on this motion?
Yes, sir, um, Mr. Kelly.
I'm sorry, did you call me Carolyn? Ed Kelly, yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Steen?
Yes.
All right, that passed unanimously. Uh, we'll move to the regular agenda, and item ten is committee reports, and it's, um, the Operations Oversight Committee meeting held on November second, twenty-twenty, the Operations Oversight Committee aligned risk subcommittee meeting held on November second, twenty-twenty, the Technology and In- In- Innovation Committee meeting held on November twelfth, twenty-twenty, and the ENI aligned risk subcommittee meeting held on eleventh, uh, November twelfth, twenty-twenty. And so those are reports that, that could be delivered, uh, now by Dr. Mackey, uh, and, and, uh, and Ms. Gonzalez, unless they wish to just, uh, have them inserted into the record in lieu of reading them.
Um, I move that we insert them in the records, uh, for the minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey, how about you, Ms. Gonzalez, do you feel the same?
I concur, yes.
Okay, uh, if there's no objection, then we'll, we'll, we'll proceed that way. Um, so agenda item eleven is a vote to reappoint the trustee representing the Northeast Quadrant to serve a second term on the CPS Energy Board, and that's, uh, Mr. Kelly, uh, the Chair of the Nominations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, in our regular meetings, I would probably ask you to leave the meeting, uh, because this is about you, uh, but I'm not gonna ask you to hang up the phone. Um, but, um, uh, we do have the issue of, uh, the possible reappoint- reappointment, uh, of Chairman Steen to a second term. Let me say that, uh, Mr. Steen was first appointed, uh, and approved by City Council for a five-year term that was commencing on February the first, two oh one six, and expiring from, hello? Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, expiring January the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, during that time, Chairman Steen has served with distinction on this board. Uh, he has chaired this board for three years and done, in my opinion, an incredibly strong job of doing that. His background is stellar, uh, some of you might not know that, uh, Chairman Steen is a former Texas Secretary of State for the state of Texas. He is also, was a Commissioner for the, for the Texas Department of Public Safety. Uh, he is esteemed, um, and very respected, uh, lawyer, uh, with a general practice. So Chairman Steen has been, in my opinion, an incredible addition to this board. I have talked, uh, spoken with him as Chairman of the Nominating Committee. He is willing to accept another five-year term for our recommendation to City Council for their approval. Uh, and so in my role as Chairman of the Nominating Committee, I would like to place a nomination, uh, the, uh, approval to City Council recommendation that Chairman Steen be approved for a second five-year term on the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Ms. Go-
Any, uh, any questions, uh, that I can answer? Okay, do, uh, do we have a second to my motion?
Uh, this is Trustee Gonzalez, uh, yes, there's a second, um, do you have an opportunity to provide comments?
Yes, of course.
Um, as the newest board member, um, I wanna thank Mr. Our Chairman. He not only has been, uh, a great mentor, but has been open to my feedback. He also was instrumental in creating the Innovation and Technology Committee that I chair, which I believe is one of the more, well, everything's important there, but I do believe that in the direction that we're moving forward, there is a need for that and a role for all trustees to participate when it comes to cybersecurity. But I believe he, he's been a chairman that is fair and open and is very much about transparency and open communication, so you have my support for supporting, uh, mature, I'm sorry, trustee, uh, Steen.
Thank you very much, other comments from trustees?
Uh, Trustee Kelly, this is Ron.
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, thank you very much for your, uh, continued service, uh, John. We've, we've all been grateful for your, your balance and leadership on this board. Uh, I've gotten, uh, a great deal of enjoyment getting to know you as a public servant, and, and it will be my honor to support you, uh, as a member of this board, uh, but also back at the City Council, uh, as Mayor of our city. So, uh, looking forward to your continued service and, and, um, thank you very much again for, for, um, being willing to do so.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor, we appreciate that, others? Okay, so, um, Ms. Felman, could you, uh, call for the vote then?
Mr. Kelly, why don't, this is Carolyn, why don't I go ahead and just call, uh, the vote? Mr. Steen will not be asked to vote on this.
Right.
So I will ask, I will ask you first, are you, are you voting aye in favor of this motion?
Yes, I am.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you, I will turn the meeting back to Chairman Steen, and congratulations, not only to you for accepting this position and for your great work in the past, but congratulations to the board for the foresight, uh, of having somebody like you join us for a continu- continuation of the next five years. Chairman Steen, back to you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, and, and just to, to say to you, Mr. Kelly, and the others, I, I just, I, I really do appreciate your kind words, and it's, uh, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. I consider you, consider you all my esteemed colleagues on this board, and to say thank you for your confidence, and, uh, I'll continue to try to li- to live up to the trust that you've placed in me, so appreciate it very much. Let's move to agenda item twelve, which is the Rate Advisory Committee update, and this will be presented by Ms. Shelman, and this is an item, uh, where, where we, we are scheduled for a vote. Go ahead, Ms. Shelman.
Yes, sir, and, um, members of the board, I understand we're running a little bit behind, so I'll give, uh, do my best to try to move this through this quickly. This is a very important, um, presentation, again, with some suggestions to the board that a rate advisory committee be created. And what I propose to do today is give you, uh, again, a review of some of the recommendations that we have gotten continually as we work through this, and hopefully present to you enough information that you'll be ready to vote on the proposed rate advisory committee. Um, we, we have a change document, there's, there's a lot of material in your packet this month, and mostly what it is, is the packet that we originally sent out, and we have summarized some of the changes that have occurred in it since we first started talking with you about it. And I wanna talk with you a little bit about a couple of things related to the consultant and the facilitator, government, clarify something about the budget, and then, um, show you the proposed resolution that we have created. If you will look on, um, packet page one sixteen, which is PDF slide four, um, you will, is that right? I think that was, okay, uh, you will see that we summarized the changes that we've made, and this isn't a, a complete list, but one thing we have done in all the background documents is add some of the comments that were made at the last meeting specifically by the mayor on the purpose of the rate advisory committee. They were very strong, they were very, uh, clear, and we thought they added a lot to the creation document. So we have, uh, with the mayor's permission, included those in our document. We have made a little, um, given you some changes on the consultant progress and the facilitator progress. We modified the description of the technical advisory committee because it is not going to include city staff at their suggestion. They are part of the regulator team, not the CPS team, and they need to participate, and, uh, we will welcome their advice, but they don't want to be a member of the committee per se. And then I want to clarify a couple of things that were said about the, the budget, so you understand what our recommendation was about that. One thing that is not entirely clear, and this just is, uh, something that we can make clear to you, that we had some changes that we decided to make pretty much at the last minute, partly some things that Ben Borzal, who's very helpful to us, passed on in a conversation we had on Friday. And so in the bylaws, we have, in some updated documents, which you may or may not have identified because it came in a separate transmission, but we've done two things to the bylaws that are not reflected in the original packet, all these have been posted on the website. But one thing we did was add a, a part of a sentence that was deleted, just omitted in Article Two relating to membership. And then secondly, a more substantive change is that we have, uh, we are now recommending that the board create a committee with a chair and a vice chair. We had started out talking about having two, uh, co-chairs, and decided that it was really gonna be simpler to have one person in charge, have a chair and vice chair. And so we made the change in part of the bylaws, we'll have to do a little bit of tweaking, pointed out to me on Friday, but we will do that. If you will turn to, um, page one seventeen, what I want to say about the rate consultant, um, same as we've had last, last month, we have interviewed, and we are ready to make a selection at the board's suggestion, we have not proceeded with that, we've not, if you vote in favor of it today, we will go ahead and select a rate consultant. But it was mentioned today that, you know, why do you, Mr. What, what's the reason for needing a rate consultant? And I would say there are a couple of things. One is, we have a very experienced and knowledgeable pricing team here, I have lots of confidence in them. I think that using a rate consultant, at least in the initial year or so of this committee, would give us someone who's got knowledge of rate structures all across the country, and give us some perspective on what some of the other utilities are doing that we might want to incorporate and had not yet thought about in our rate structure and rate design. Secondly, it provides some manpower for supporting this committee because it's going to take, um, a good effort at the beginning at least to get everyone up to speed on the rate design issue. And then finally, I think it provides some objective expertise. We want this committee to be trusted and transparent, and if you have any concerns that all you hear from CPS Energy is what we want you to know, the rate consult- consultant will be there to say, here's what we believe, here's what we know, we think it's a good add, and another point of view, and will be worth the money that we pay for it. The facilitator is in the same boat it was last month, we have reviewed, uh, RFP responses, but we have not made a selection. On page one nineteen, this is just the reference to the change that we made in the technical advisory committee to remove the city staff. And then finally, if you look on page one twenty, you'll see the budget, the proposed budget. Let me clarify, we have not spent any money so far on the rate advisory committee. We believe that the proposed budget for the first year is five hundred and two thousand dollars, that's an estimate. And it consists of the money for the consultant, the money for the facilitator, the, uh, meaning facilitator services, those are the electronic services that we're gonna need to provide this kind of access, like we're having today, to the community so they can participate in and follow the work of the rate advisory committee. And we have a smaller budget for the- And we have a smaller budget for the next year because we haven't, we don't know exactly how this is going to go, but this is what we think we will need to fund this committee. The internal costs, we had put on there at the request of several people who wanted it to be clear that we spent a lot of time working on this. But those are sub-costs, those are people who are working here. It is a lot of additional work, but it's not additional money we're spending. So what I would like to do at this point is to ask whether you all feel that you're ready to proceed. If you are, what we need is a motion to approve, if this is what you want to do, a resolution to proceed with the creation of a rate advisory committee under the general framework that the staff has proposed, giving the board the staff to add or modify operational or other details of the committee as needed to facilitate effective committee operation so long as the objectives and purpose of the rack that's approved by the board are not altered. And we have included a formal resolution in the packet to that effect. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions and we would certainly be willing, be interested in hearing your comments.
So we could proceed with questions or comments or another way we could go, we could have someone make the motion. I know, Mayor, you were interested in, you've been so instrumental in this and perhaps making the motion. We could do that first and get the second and go to discussion, however you all want to proceed.
Before we do that, I'm looking at slide, I think it's 120. When I look at the budget, my only concern on the budget is, does this include social media budget, like, you know, online advertisement?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Is it under media buys or supplies and materials?
I'm not sure. I'm going to let literally answer that.
Trustee Gonzalez, we have a budget in our corporate communications and marketing budget. We put a campaign together to support the activities of the rack just through our, you know, we're supporting the activities of the flag power bundle. So we would do it under the, you know, under the work that we're already doing to get our message out. But certainly we can separate rack costs and keep track of them so to get how much we're spending.
I think it would be important because I would like to see the reach reports. I mean, I think that, I just want to make sure that, as you know, my goal is to increase engagement. I've been participating as much as I can and I'm a little disappointed with the amount of people who participate. I don't think it's y'all. I just think people are just, you know, consumed with so many different things under COVID. But I just want to make sure that we're creative or find ways, not just online, but to be able. So to me, I'm a little concerned that the budget, at least the one I see on the screen, is a little too small for outreach. But again, I think what matters here is that we get the rack approved and we move forward. So that's something that can, you know, be a little bit more clear where the money is going and how we're going to measure success of increased engagement and there could be different KPIs for that, KPIs for that.
Yes, ma'am. We will, we will work hard to put a good plan together.
Aye, thank you.
Chairman, this is Ron. I'll be happy to make that motion and get a second and continue with discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want, do you want Carolyn Schellmann to read it or into the record?
I can read it. I've got it here. I move to approve a resolution to proceed with the creation of a rate advisory committee under the general framework proposed by the CPS Energy staff, which was informed by CPS trustees, staff, and community stakeholders with authority given to staff to add or modify operational or other details that committee has needed to facilitate effective committee operations so long as the objectives and purpose of the rack, as approved by the board, are not altered. There's my motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Dr. Mackey. All right, let's have discussion then.
May I proceed, Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just want to thank my colleagues. I know this has been a long discussion and it's dated back to January when I recommended the CPS trustees support the creation of this rack. And as you know, in March, we took a vote, a resolution to move forward in this process of due diligence and I commend the staff for doing that. Let me reiterate, the committee would provide input to the trustees and CPS management and it's focused on two main charges, to review and provide input to the design of the current and future rate structures and fees, focusing on the overall impacts to our customers, and also to provide input on the generation and resource planning of our organization. Two incredibly important pillars of this operation, which again is a public utility. Over the last several months, we've been doing due diligence. We've been hearing updates and I'm grateful to the staff for their excellent research. We've been hearing all about it and we've had an opportunity to shape what we're voting on today. I want to emphasize that the rack will not change CPS governance structure. Its advisory may, will be appointed by and will provide input to the CPS Board of Trustees. And as you know, in the packet delineates that there will also be a representative appointed by each of the council members as well. This is in parallel to the SAW's rate advisory structure that has existed for quite some time. Obviously, we have an incredible opportunity for us as an organization, but also as a public organization responsible to citizens that it serves to engage in a dialogue that advances all of our major company objectives that we talk about every, every week, every month, from our responsibility to reliable service, to environmental stewardship, to our people-first approach in general. So with the help of city staff, and I want to thank city manager Eric Walsh, along with our CFO, Ben Gorzal, for the really intensive work they've done with CPS staff to refine what we're voting on today and the proposal to move forward. I'm very confident that this is the right step forward. So I look forward to the, any questions that you have, but more importantly, I look forward to the work that's going to unfold with this rate advisory committee. Thank you all very much and again, here for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, yes.
That got, that got a little bit garbled. Who is that?
This is trustee Kelly that I will wait.
Okay, so trustee Kelly is waiting. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question concerning this proposed government structure. I see where the board, including the mayor appointees and the city council appointees. You know, I could, I could, I understand and I could see where the city council appoint one individual, but we have 11 individuals for the government structure, for the board. Could someone tell me how we're going to do that? Each one of us appoint two or we make two names to the board? Or how are we going to do that? You know, are we?
Chairman, I can, I can describe that. So as it's done, as SAW is essentially what happens is when the rate advisory committee appointment applications are posted, the city council then forwards their representatives for each of the districts to CPS Energy. CPS then fills in the rest of the roster, particularly as it relates to ensuring there's the competencies from a technical standpoint that could be represented on the rack. So essentially, it starts with the city council, then the CPS board fills in the rest of the roster, then the whole thing is approved. The roster as a whole will be approved by the CPS board.
Okay.
Dr. Mackey, this is Carolyn. I think that if you want to, the way the board does it is up to the board as you all get together. I think one thing that we staff plan to do is try to advertise broadly to encourage people to apply and then we will make the slate of candidates available to you or the whole list of candidates. And you all are definitely welcome to nominate people yourself. So I think it's whatever the board thinks will be the best way to get a broad perspective on this committee.
I understand what you're talking about. Are we going to call a special board meeting to do this? Are we going to do it at a regular board meeting? Or when are we going to proceed with this or nominating individuals? Or I know it, I understand, Ms. Schellmann, and what you're saying, but I just kind of want a clear understanding from the board, which direction that we're going to go. I would like to introduce to a couple of individuals that I think would serve well on this board.
Well, so Chairman, may I jump in for a second?
Yes, go ahead.
So let me, and again, this is kind of in parallel to our other utility, but I would recommend that we have a liaison from the board to management as we get those applications in. And I would ask that trustee Gonzalez, if she's willing, be our liaisons and management to help us as a board identify the applicants and ensure that we have a good pool to choose from and eventually approve. But I think as Carolyn mentioned, the process for this, you know, obviously will be refined as we move towards the actual posting.
If it's okay with my colleagues, but would love to participate and provide leadership in this fashion to both the board, the organization, as well as the mayor's office and the committee.
Okay, that give us some directions in that aspect right there and I would support the mayor and trustee Gonzalez lead that right there. The second question I have is concerning the consultants and facilitators, the funding for that. Can someone explain that and let us know, how are we going to proceed with that right there?
Dr. Mackey, this is Carolyn again. I think that what we will do is just find the money in our existing budget to pay for this and we recognize it's important and we're just going to find the dollars for it and create a budget, a cost center that will fund the rack.
Are you saying that, that I'm looking at that internal cost is really just labor from personnel? It's not really a material cost of money, but it's a labor cost and I understand that internal cost. But the external cost, a consultant, a facilitator, and then a meeting facilitator, those, the media supplies, supplies and materials, media, I understand that right there. But three consultants, I mean, one consultant, facilitator, and a meeting facilitator. Is that something that's necessary?
Dr. Mackey, the meeting facilitator is similar to the service that we use every month for this board meeting. So that's what, because we assume we're not going to be meeting in person and because we want to allow people in the community to participate, we will have to have some program service to support that, just like we do the board meetings. That's what the meeting facilitator is. And the other two, one is the rate consultant and the other is someone that we want to hire who understands this community, can keep the meetings going, can support the chair, can make sure that everyone gets to talk and has a voice, really makes the meetings go well.
Is there a possibility that we can, we could combine the consultant and the facilitator A and B? Then I could support the C D and E because of the pandemic, the meeting facilitator, but the consultant and the facilitator for that amount? Is any way we could look at that and maybe one possible person instead of two? I'm just, I'm just, I support the board in whatever decisions they make, but I'm just looking at this right here.
This is, this is Paula. I'm going to, I appreciate all the input. I just would like to add some additional comments. We are 1,000% supportive of whatever the board wants to do, always have been, always will be. So doing the rack, we think, can be a really good thing because this stuff is hard. This is a hardworking, there's going to be a hardworking group of folks that look at rate design and activities. I think even trustee Gonzalez has talked about, this is a monthly commitment of multiple hours that have to be done. The organization is already under a tremendous amount of stress trying to handle COVID, trying to stay on top of other things, and we need help. We need, we also need help because this issue in particular, as public has been, it's not slow because of the fight, it's slow again because of COVID and the things that have slowed us down. But one thing that we have a problem with right now is people who are interested in this committee, we want to make sure they feel well-treated. And we're going to have to go back in our budget and try to find these dollars because we want them to feel well-treated. And my group's already working minimum of 12 hours a day, if not longer. We're 24/7, organization 365. And I know a million dollars, I believe about half a million dollars. Sounds like a lot of money. We're 11 billion, almost $12 billion in assets. We're almost, we're about $2.5 billion. This is not going to cause a dollar increase, it's not going to drive a rate case. It's just, if this is what the will of the board is, we need some help. And everything costs money. We'll be as frugal and careful as possible, but different people have different skill sets and expertise. And what we can do is try this for this year, keep you all updated. If we can streamline those costs, because you know that you all tell us whatever we can do, go do. So take Dr. Mackey's challenge, how can we make it better? But we need a little wiggle room so we can get running on this thing and get going. And I'm just, I'm just very, very respectfully asking for some consideration so we can manage both the qualitative issues around this committee with trustee Gonzalez and all of you, as well as the quantitative issues and try to make sure that people feel comfortable as we're working really long hours to do all we can. And so those internal costs are going to be incurred, they're already being incurred and we're finding a way to do that. We'll do whatever we have to do, but we would love to have some assistance. We will work within our budget and we will keep you updated.
Ms. Cole Williams, it's John Steen. So what Dr. Mackey is asking, there are two positions. There's a consultant and a facilitator and maybe you could address why you need both positions? I think that's what he wanted to know.
A consultant doesn't necessarily, a consultant has a lot of expertise about rates. Then there's a different level of expertise around the technical issues around generation. And a facilitator has a special set of skills associated with managing those resources. And we found that when we went out to the market, there were different people with different skill sets. We'd also like to hire some people locally. And so to give us a more diverse pool and a better place to start, we broke those functions based upon the specialization that people have and not just hire a consultant who has great experience and then they're not really great at facilitation. We're hiring people that are great at specific things. And all we think we would do would be to move the fees together, not make them smaller.
If I can just add to that, Dr. Mackey, along the lines of what our CEO just said, if you could just let me work with the staff, but I do agree that we do need a facilitator. They really specialize in strategic communications, specifically also grassroots communications. I've had the privilege of participating in many and also working with professional services such as Jimenez and Associates. And so there is a value to breaking those two components. And again, this is a high-level budget, but you have my commitment to make sure that there's a further breakdown or consideration to maximize the investment.
All right. What other comments are there?
Mr. Chairman, this is trustee Kelly. I find this discussion very entertaining. You know my objection to this redundant politically charged committee. I have not seen or heard anything that changes my mind. As a matter of fact, the last few minutes has even solidified my thoughts even more. You can see what we're getting into, to the bureaucratization and politicalization of this company, which leads to mediocrity. Here we are spending- Here we are spending quality time arguing about a stupid committee that we don't even need because we've had the advice of our citizens advisory committee for 25 years almost. It's done an excellent job, it's structured very similar to this one. It's functioning, it's staff, it's got expertise that can handle this issue in a heartbeat. But no, we have to create a new committee because it is politically popular to do that. There is absolutely no need for this committee and I'm not going to spend a huge amount of time on it. I could get into it in great detail, but I want to remind you that we do survey after survey after survey and our customers tell us they want two things, affordable energy, dependable energy. That's what they say overwhelmingly in every survey. We are delivering that in spades. We have the lowest energy cost to our customers of any utility in the state and among the lowest in the country. Because of our finely tuned generation capacity, we have among the highest reliability and dependability factor of any utility in the country. You also saw from the CEO's presentation a while ago that we have extremely high customer satisfaction rates. We're doing exactly what our owners want us to do, the citizens of San Antonio. We are doing exactly, exactly what they want us to do. But the other thing they don't know, because we never talked about it and we should, is that while we are delivering the lowest energy prices in the state of Texas, among the highest quality service in the state of Texas, among the highest persistency and reliability in the country, we are also giving the city of San Antonio almost a million dollars each and every day. And we have zero control over those dollars, zero! Those controls, those dollars are controlled specifically by the mayor and city council. Last year, we gave them $350 million. Think about it for a second. What else do we need to do, guys? Come on, give me a break. Tell me a company in the United States that is doing the same thing and has not had a rate increase in over six years. And when it did have one, it's had one in 10 years and it was 4.25%. The spectacular success of this company is absolutely incredible. And yet we have people standing on the sidelines who's never played in the game at all trying to tell us how to run this company. How stupid can we be? So my vote is the same as it would have been in January. Absolutely no, we don't need it, it's unnecessary, we don't need more political BS, we don't need further bureaucracy of this company. Let's run it as a business. Take your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other questions or comments?
Chairman, this is, uh, this is Ron. I think there's no more suspense, I'll move to question.
All right, um, are we prepared to vote? And so the motion was by Mayor Nuremberg. And again, help me with who was the second, was it Dr. Mackey?
Yes, sir.
That's correct, okay. So a motion by the mayor, seconded by Dr. Mackey. So Ms. Shelman, if you'll go ahead and call the roll, please.
All right, Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
This is Gonzalez.
Absolutely no, and incidentally, I am going to make sure that the minutes of this meeting reflect all of my concerns because at some point, this will come back to haunt us and I want people who read this minutes in the future to know there was at least one person that understood exactly what was going on.
All right, so Mr. Kelly, that was a no, and now what about...
It is an unequivocal no.
Yes, sir, I got your message. Um, Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair Steen?
Yes.
Uh, 4-2-1, and with that, it passes.
And Ms. Shelman, you'll heed, uh, Dr., Mr. Kelly's request that his vigorous dissent be included in the minutes.
Yes, sir, we certainly will.
All right, that concludes Agenda Item 12. And so now we convene to executive session. And, um, Ms. Shelman, do you want to help us to go there? And then, of course, we're all going to hang up and call another number to get into the executive session. And then we'll come back and we convene to open session afterwards.
At this time, the board will, uh, move to executive session as noticed under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for consultation concerning widely matters, including attorney-client matters under Section 551071, real property matters under Section 551072, prospective gifts or donations under 551073, personnel under 551074, security personnel or devices under 551076, economic development negotiations under 551087, competitive matters under 551086, security audits and devices under 551.089, or confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act under Texas Government Code Section 418.183F. And it is 357.
So Ms. Shelman, before our CEO jumps in, let's, it's now 357, and let's set up a little bit of a break. So how about if we call in at 410? Would that suit everyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, then, we'll convene in the executive session at 410.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly. Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is an executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly. Yes, we are. We have...
Are we... we are? Okay. So, okay, we've returned from executive session. Ms. Shelman, would you go ahead and bring us back? Oh, let's start, let's start out by calling the roll.
Yes, I'll do that. Chair Steen.
And you'll need to get closer to the mic.
Okay. Chair Steen.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez, can you hear us? Can you hear me? We do know that the mayor is not on. So...
Right.
This is trustee Gonzalez, I'm on.
And the mayor had to leave, had to, had to drop out for his, to go to his daily COVID briefing.
We do have a quorum, and I can report that the board has concluded its executive session. It has moved back into open session. Nothing was discussed in closed session other than the matters that were noticed. No votes were taken. And it is, according to my timekeeping device, 5:25 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Shelman. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Good. So the meeting's adjourned, and now we're going to take, we're going to allow 15 minutes. So help me, Ms. Shelman. When should we call back in?
At 20 till 6:00.
Okay. 20 till 6:00. All right. Is that okay with everybody?
We'll be here soon again.